Know how to get everybody's attention. I went out to talk to someone and everybody got quiet to see what, I guess, what I was saying, but.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
We're pleased this evening to have a new pastor from the Hendersonville Church of the Nazarene in town taking that position from Georgia, Reverend Hunter Cummings. If he would come forward, we're very pleased to have him and welcome him to the state. He's just now settling in. And I will say that out of everyone who has come to do the invocation, we've never had anyone bring cookies. And we will have them up here if anybody. It's gonna be a long night for the budget, so cookies are here, Reverend.
Thank you. We move into our new home this Wednesday. I've got good news. If you didn't hear, last Friday, the IRS announced you can now Venmo or PayPal them to reduce the national debt. They've given that as, so I thought, tonight, if you get in trouble and you can't get it all to balance, you could just, you know, set up a Venmo PayPal and people can pay Sumner County. I've got really good news and then I'll pray. This is from the prophet Jeremiah. He says, "Happy are those who trust in the Lord, who rely on the Lord. They will be like trees planted by the streams, whose roots reach down to the water. They won't fear drought when it comes. Their leaves will remain green. They won't be stressed in the time of drought or fail to bear fruit." Will you pray with me? Father in heaven, we thank you so much tonight for how you have blessed this county. And Lord, we ask at the start of this meeting tonight that you would not just supply our physical needs, but that you would supply wisdom. The scriptures say that we can ask you for wisdom in the time of need, and I pray you give wisdom tonight. I pray you give creativity tonight. Lord, I pray that you give a spirit of unity tonight. We thank you in advance for what you're going to do, and we pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Remain standing, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible and indivisible and just as one.
All right, call the row.
Each commission reports your presence.
We have 23 present, and Commissioner Lambeth has sent word that he will be here very shortly, so he will be joining us soon. We have several comments to make about the agenda before we actually do approve it. I think that Mr. Becker has something that he would like to. Mr. Mansfield, go ahead. Mr. Man, you were actually in the queue first, Mr. Mansfield.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion to sever the budgets with County General. From separate from the schools, with the county going first. Separate, I make a motion to sever the budgets. County General, separate from schools with the County General going first. That's my motion.
All right, a motion to sever and deal with those separately, and it has been seconded. Who seconded that motion? Commissioner Miller. So we will vote on that. If you will, Madam Clerk.
Each commission records your vote.
It will not be severed. With 12 votes to 11 votes, it does not have a positive vote. Commissioner Becker, you had something, I think?
Yes, just waiting for the red light. Thank you, sir. The Budget Committee met this, earlier this evening, and there are, the Education Committee met earlier this evening, and there are three, three budget amendments that are just for information only that I would like to add, just for docketing purposes. And then there is one item that I also want to add that we will need to vote on for approval, and that is related to the $2,000 bonuses that the teachers will be in. So I'd like to add both, those four items to the, to the agenda.
All right, without objection, we will. All right, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to remove the following items from the agenda. Under D, General Operations, Items Two and Three. Under Legislative, Item F, Items One, Two, and Three. And, under Budget, at the request of the constitutional officers, removal of Item Number Four. How so move?
All right, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, place that on the board. Commissioner Mansfield.
Well, first, I object to these items being pulled off. I'll first address Resolution 2507-05, which is Item Number Three in the General Operations Committee. This was something that County Mayor actually submitted a report on June the 2nd last month, asking needed approval and appropriation of County Commission with a defined scope of work for this project. Commissioner Klein, Commissioner Jones brought this forward to Gen Ops, to put it on the Gen Ops Agenda several months ago. It went through the committee process, even so far as much to get homeowner of approval, where this junk is on, partially on a private property that's county, county junk. It was wrongfully, I believe, pulled off last month, and it would be wrongful to do it again this month, simply with the fact that even the County Mayor said he needed approval and appropriation of County Commission. And this is what we've done through the committee process, and this is a resolution, just approving the County Mayor to remove junk from county property and/or neighboring property of 10 feet over or whatever, and then take it to the Resource Authority. It would require no extra funds to be expended, other than one or two personnel, a trailer, taking a trailer load of this stuff, or two to the Resource Authority and dumping it off. It's not a $25,000 project, it's not a $5,000 project. It is just literally time and using current county vehicles, such as a truck and a trailer. So I'm opposed to that, just on that instance alone. But I do want to know, I guess, ask why the rest of these items are being pulled, specifically the request for the Tennessee General Assembly to enact a private act to establish term limits for county commissioners, and as well as amending the standing rules and procedures relating to recognition of the public. Why are these two items specifically being pulled off?
This is not a time to debate. It's time for you to express what you want to. I don't know.
Can I get an answer to that question from the per maker?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to add that on 2507-05, Item Number Three, I made the amendment in committee because I thought maybe the resolution was, people took issue with the fact that we were, the wording was directing the County Mayor or requesting the County Mayor to do it. And we changed the language to make it more appealing, to be more reflective of what the Mayor asked for, to get approval for the County Mayor to do it, since that's what he asked. So we worded it like that to make everybody happy if everybody was not on the same page with the fact that the Mayor asked for that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
I'm also not going to vote to remove these items, and I think we have a problem here. If people don't agree with things that are on the agenda now, we just remove them, so that we can't talk about them, we can't debate them. The public can't talk about them, and I think that it's actually, in my opinion, unethical that these things are being removed. I'm not so sure that we might, should bring somebody in from a state level and see if this is legal and ethical, to be quite honest.
Commissioner Sho. Commissioner Tishna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I express the same thoughts, but I've got to go a step further. My folks in District 14, out in the Cotton Town area, have been just bombarded with flooding. That is a direct result. I mean, it's obvious that they just need to be cleaned up. It's just, and the citizens have asked time and time again that it happened, and so I just got to say, there's no way in the world that I would vote to remove it. I would just vote that we allow the Mayor send some folks and remove it out there. I mean, honestly, if all 24 of us commissioners can't agree on it, then we ought to get our butts out there, remove it ourselves, because just, it's not right to do this to people. And with all the flooding that has happened across the world, it's ridiculous to think that we want to just allow our people to suffer over some silly bickering that we've got going on in here. I don't know, I don't even know what's going on, but I just think it's ridiculous. We've got a way that, and I'm addressing you directly, I'm not talking about anybody, I'm not doing anything outside of Robert's rules. So I just want, I want to make sure that. Number two, I think it's ridiculous that, that I've not had anybody say, hey, I sure don't want term limits. I've not had anybody reach out about that. And so I think that it is a complete avoidance of anything that the citizens want, like has happened time and time again by this commission and previous commissions. And I think that it's time that we just stand up, even if it loses. Even if I lose, I'm in the minority. I just got to say, it's ridiculous that the citizens always get steamrolled over and over and over again. And I, I just don't, I don't want to stand for it anymore, and I have to say something, because it's just ridiculous. It happens on every one of these, every single month. Committee on Committees gets steamrolled, and it's embarrassing. And then this gets steamrolled, and it's embarrassing. And I just think that we need to stop being embarrassing. We need to do what they hired us to do.
Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This vote's going to go how it's going to go. I would just ask, and this is just a request of the Chair, that if there were folks who were here to speak on these items, that they came with the understanding that they were going to be able to speak on these items, if there were folks that they were able to sign, that who've signed up to speak on them, they'd still be allowed to speak on them. However the vote goes, that's just my request to the Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Mansfield.
Commissioner Klein should go first.
Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Likewise, I am opposed to the removal of any of these items. We have a crowd of people here. We've been bombarded with emails on many of these issues, and it's not fair to the public that we, as their representatives, are inadvertently pulling items off the agenda, specifically the Cotton Town debris. I was the Chair of that committee for two solid years, and I spent, we have spent three years trying to get that debris removed. That was part of the original FEMA program. The demolition crew did not finish the job. They were not called on it. And so that debris has been an eyesore and a liability to the county for three solid years. And it's, I've tried getting money allocated for it, that never sailed. Now we're doing it where our, we have a, we have a dump truck, we have a trailer, we have a backhoe. It would be a very simple thing for our maintenance crew to go out there and take care of that debris, and it's, it's time to do it. So I would request that my colleagues here on the commission will consider that when they vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones. Mansfield.
Commissioner Jones, I've technically spoken once, so he should go.
I think Commissioner Jones is to.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to mention one other thing in my previous comments. So when these items are mentioned to be removed, they just give the number of the item, but a lot of the citizens don't know what these items are that are getting removed. And one of them's the discussion on term limits, which we've gotten tons of emails on. People want to see term limits, and I don't know the reason why we would not want to discuss that tonight, why anybody would not want to go on record on their thoughts on term limits. So that's one of them. And the other one is for allowing the public to speak on non-agenda items. This is the chance that they have to talk to their commissioner or another commissioner. If they've got a commissioner that won't listen to them, this is their chance to talk to other commissioners about this issue. A lot of people don't know how to do it, but they know how to come to the county building, and we're actually talking about taking that off of the agenda and not allowing these folks to come up and talk about things that are on their minds and problems that they have in their community. That's ridiculous.
Commissioner Mansfield. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go on record. I'm going to kind of repeat what the commissioner behind me said, and request that you allow these people to at least speak on these items regardless of how the vote goes. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the other concerns, except for go on record that I ran on a citizen being able to approach their government, whether an item is on the agenda or not. I stand by that tonight, but I respect everyone's vote, however that may go. Just for the record, I am flexible on that, whether they want to speak, whether we, if it did make it to the agenda, whether that was at the beginning of the commission meeting or at the end. I'm really, I'm really not going to be too picky on that. I just would like to see maybe their opportunity to have their voices heard regardless of an agenda item or not. Thank you.
Commissioner Becker.
I think the term limits resolution, I don't believe this is the resolution that passed out of legislative, so I guess, that being the case, I would be fine with removing it tonight, so.
Commissioner Brown.
If you look at the public and take a poll as to what term limits mean, especially in federal Congress, it's a 90-10 issue. People want term limits. People are tired of seeing career politicians. And to take it off the agenda would then be to shut down these people's voices, again, to speak truth to power. And this is something that is disgraceful, really, to take something off of, off the agenda at the last minute, when it's been published for five days at least, and now we're going to remove it. And all these people showed up, all these people emailed us, letting us know.
Commissioner Rogers.
Call a question.
Question's been called, so we will put that on the board to see if we're all in agreement.
Each commission records your vote.
The question's been called, and we will, oh, pardon me, that's 16, we need 16 votes, a majority of the people agree, but not a two, not a supermajority of 13. So Commissioner Mansfield.
First, I'll address Agenda Item 2507-06, which is to request the Tennessee General Assembly to enact a private act to establish term limits for county commissioners. This did pass out of legislative. A colleague is correct that, as far as, there was an amendment made to this that violated our constitution, that you can't, commissioners can't run for two, two terms. So this was the original, one that was presented in the legislative packet, that was published in legislative, that was published in the, for the commission that I'd worked on. So that is why Commissioner Becker's amendment, I voted for Commissioner Becker's amendment, you know, I thought it was a great idea, but we can't do it, unfortunately, because the state constitution is explicit in that it does say a county commissioner has for four years. You know, that is what it defines as a term. So, but one thing the county, the state constitution does not say is how many terms that a county commissioner can run. There was a memo sent out, Mr. Chairman, that you, you sent out from an opinion from a C-TAS employee. That was a misstatement, in my opinion. If you just read the court document, I hope you guys read the Supreme Court decision, that person from C-TAS claimed that term limits can only be enacted through a charter form of county government. That interpretation is just simply incorrect and false, and does not reflect what the Tennessee Supreme Court actually said in that case. If you actually read the Tennessee Supreme Court case, it actually bolsters and defends the position that the General Assembly has the right to enact term limits and set that as a qualification for office. They explicitly say that in the court case, as regards to county commissioners. So it is, it is, there's nothing that would preclude the Sumner County Commission for voting on a private act, takes 16 votes for term limits, to send it to the General Assembly, for the General Assembly to either vote for or not vote for. But they do have, according to the Supreme Court of the State of Tennessee, according to this court case that was emailed to us, erroneously saying only applies to charter forms of government, which does not say that at all. It was a charter to commissioners who sued the Shelby County over their charter form of government. That's all it was talking about. But in that, the Supreme Court justices did make cases for the authority of the General Assembly to enact term limits on county commissioners. So under general law. And the only way they do that is by changing it by a public act or by a private act. And there's nothing that preclude that. So there was, I just wanted to, I guess, correct for the record, to help anybody, under, any misunderstandings, misinformation that's been shared out there regarding this. Nine out of 10 Hendersonville voters voted for term limits for their alderman. Eight out of 10 Gallatin residents voted for term limits for their city councilman. Eight, almost nine out of 10 Tennesseans support term limits for all elected officials. We had zero opposition to this from citizens, 100% support, over two dozen emails that I got from this, myself. So this is extremely popular. I feel it's a great disservice to remove this from the agenda, especially when citizens are here to speak on these items. Something is simple. If you don't want to vote for term limits, don't vote for it. But just remove it, so it's completely a dead issue, I think is cowardice, in my opinion. So I'm going to amend that, that motion to keep on these items under legislative, specifically 2507-06 regarding term limits, and 2507-07 regarding amending the standing rules and procedures to allow recognition of public non-agenda items.
All right, motion and a second. And would you restate your motion, so we are very clear?
I'm amending the motion to remove, to exclude these two items, Items One and Two under legislative, Resolution 2507-6, which is about term limits, Resolution 2507-7, which is, which is about the public speaking to non-agenda items. Amendment is to exclude those from being removed from the agenda.
Okay, I think, I don't think there's a problem with that, because I believe that this is a motion to remove it for consideration tonight. I don't think it was a motion, that it is dead, just, I think with the budget and everything else. But we will put that on the board for a vote, and it'll be specifically spelled out then.
Each commission records your vote.
That motion fails 12, with only 12, 11 yes votes. As a matter of clarification, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Harrison, is, this is not, your intention of your motion was not to kill this, was it? It was, it was not to be on the agenda tonight. Is that right, or?
My motion was to remove them from the agenda tonight, specifically because we've got budget items, and, no, it was not to necessarily kill future debate.
So this would be to, is this defer or refer? Or can it just be pulled from the agenda? We're setting the agenda, just be pulled from the agenda. Doesn't that be deferred or referred? I wouldn't think, we haven't taken it up for debate yet. Well, my clarification on it is that this has been pulled for tonight from the agenda because of the budget issues and everything else on this busy schedule. But it would be my understanding that this could come back up. I don't think it's killed in any way. That's my opinion. Okay, we're, we're ready to vote. Well, Commissioner Jones.
I've got an amendment also. I would like to move that we exclude Item Number Three in General Operations Committee. That was specified by the Mayor with instructions on how to do this. He said he needed the commission's approval. He said he needed permission from the homeowner. I went and got permission from the homeowner, and we changed the language of the resolution to approve instead of direct the County Mayor. We did everything per his request to get this done, and it's already been paid for. It's an eyesore, and who out here would want a neighbor that left junk piled in their front yard that blew over into your yard for the last three years? I just think we need to take care of this and be done with it.
Is there a second to this? All right, it's motion and a second to put this back on the agenda. Is that what your motion is? Not, not take it off the agenda. All right, anyone else in the queue speaking on this particular item? Raise your hand, please, if you want to speak on this particular item. Commissioner Mansfield. Commissioner Mansfield?
I'm just gonna simply make an amendment to the amendment that any items, should they get pulled off this agenda, because they're not being deferred anywhere, they're not being referred, that they would automatically get sent back to the committees from which they came if they get pulled off.
All right, a motion and a second, uh, on that. So, we're on that particular item now, that, that, that it's just directed, that these will go back to the committee from which it came. I think we take Mr. Mansfield's first. Okay, uh, anyone wanting to speak on Commissioner Mansfield's? Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just gonna ask, since you're the chairman, would you walk us through? If this doesn't pass, will you walk us through the scenario that you see? We were voted to come into the people's house to do the people's business. It's followed the proper committee process. All of these items, this one included, have been brought forth to vote on. We've received a lot of communication from the citizens in order to vote on them tonight. People have come to speak on it. People said, please make sure that you vote for it, whatever this is, yes or no, all these different things. Will you walk me through, when something is removed from the agenda? What, I mean, I, I understand that Mr. Mansfield is making a motion to hopefully have it come before committee again, but can you explain to me in any kind of rationale so the people can hear, how that you plan for an, an agenda item who, that has been squashed and removed? Including one of them about not speaking, uh, about allowing them to speak on something that's not on the agenda? So, all those being squashed, how do you see that coming forth again in proper protocol by Robert's rules so that we get a chance to vote on it like the people elect us to do?
I'm not sure I understood in all of that what you were saying, but in any event, no, I won't explain it because it's not my motion, it's not mine to explain. I'm the chair.
Yes, sir.
I sort of moderate this thing.
Yes, sir, uh, but you did say that it would, it was gonna not, it was gonna come back up.
This is not killed, as I see it.
But what is it then? If it, if it's not deferred or referred? Yeah, can, can I, can I direct to, to the, our, our, uh, law director and see if it's not killed, if it's not deferred or referred, what part of Robert's rules does that stand in? I'd like to know, because I don't, I don't understand where that comes in. I, I don't think it's a possibility unless there's a completely new motion brought forth. But can, can I just defer or to find out how, if it's not?
I will let the attorney speak to that issue.
Thank you.
So, we're just right now trying to approve an agenda. That's the whole purpose. I, I'm not trying to make light of it, but that's what this is, for you all to determine what you're gonna discuss tonight, and this is just one of the directions you're going down, which is what you want to remove. So, yes, you can do that. Now, as far as pulling it, killing it, or deferring it or referring it, that's entirely up to the maker as to what it is their intent is. So, I've got no control over that, but i, if, the way Mr. Hyde just explained it, if there's no direction other than remove it, then it's susceptible to come back up on a budget, uh, at any time, unless it gets referred or deferred back to a, uh, committee or the originating committee.
So, I appreciate your answer to that, but it still doesn't, I mean, if something's, sorry, if something...
So, I appreciate that, but my question was, if it's removed, how does it come back up without being brought back up through the full committee process as a new item? It's not referred or deferred. How is it brought up? It's not, is the answer. That's the legal answer. It is never brought back up again unless some commissioner is able to get it on the agenda. That's it. It's killed, it's squashed, it's done. Want to make sure they understand that we are squashing it if it's voted off. Anyone who votes to remove it means that they never want to talk about the possibility of term limits, and they never want to talk about the creek being cleaned out, and they never want to talk about people being able to talk about something that's not on the agenda, because God knows we're not gonna let something be on the agenda that we don't want to discuss.
All right, um, Commissioner Janon?
Thank you. I've been, I've listened to y'all for mon, for years, as long as I've been on the commission, and we've had really long nights of meetings, of debate and rulemaking, whatever. And I have listened to it, and I have felt like I was gonna fall out of my seat because I was so tired, but I stayed because I didn't care. I got voted to do my job, to stay as long as it took, and do the people's work. But when things are pulled off for the excuse that we have a budget, we have two budgets, we have this, well, I'm sorry, this is the way it goes. And we were voted in to do the people's work, to stay as long as it takes, and if you don't like being here, you should resign. Hush. So, I'm just saying that the excuse, the ex, I don't, the excuse, sir, that was given because we have budgets tonight and other things is not a reason to take it off the agenda, in my opinion. I don't think it's right, because it's the people's information, it's things that people want to hear about, and we, we need to vote on it. But I don't think the excuse of because we have other work going on with that budget or with the agenda should be the reason to remove it. That's, that's lazy. And so, I just want to divorce my opinion about it because everyone else has an opinion about it, and I think it's wrong, and I think it needs to be left. That's all I have to say.
Uh, Commissioner Rogers?
Call a question.
Question's been called, unless it be placed on the board.
Each commissioner record your vote.
There has been a second, incidentally. There are sixteen people that are, uh, in favor of calling the question and moving forward with this, uh, vote. Yes, yes, we are. All right. I would like for you to do that.
My amendment simply was if, should any item be removed from this agenda tonight, it's automatically sent back to the committee from which it came.
All right, so, uh, merely what Mr. Mansfield is saying is that this is just saying that it will go back to be reviewed by the committee, uh, from which it came. Commissioner Nguyen? Okay, all right, we'll vote on this. Place it, place it on the... All right, place it on the board. No. The amendment. Yes.
Each commissioner record your vote.
All right, that, uh, vote is twenty-three to one. So, we're back to the... Commissioner Jones, okay? Would you restate?
So, my amendment was to exclude item number three under General Operations and to keep it on the agenda since the county mayor asked for approval from the commission to be granted and for the permission from the homeowner to be given, and that's what we did as a committee, and we changed the language of the resolution. So, I wanted to keep that on there, please.
All right, everyone understand the motion? All right, we'll, uh, we have two people to speak. Commissioner Nguyen, is this on, on that matter? Commissioner Shoup? Okay.
Just a point of clarification, and I think this is correct, but, uh, please clarify, that in order for Mr. Mansfield's, um, amendment, which overwhelmingly passed to take effect, this amendment would also need to pass, correct? Because it is nested under the first one. That's, so, I just want to make sure that I understand, I believe that is procedurally correct. Is that, is that true, Ms. Chairman?
Well, I, I would assume that Mr. Mansfield's took care of this motion, but, uh, you know, well, what are you wanting, Commissioner Jones? I, I'm not quite understanding.
Mr. Mansfield said if any item gets removed, that it automatically goes on the agenda of the next committee meeting, correct?
It goes back to the committee.
I don't want this one to be removed and fall into that category. I want to discuss it tonight and vote on it. These items haven't been removed yet. We're voting to remove a slate of items, and I want to take one of those items out of it, because it seemed like the easiest no-brainer one to clean up property. If, if it fails, it fails, th, then that means, you know, we don't want to clean up our own mess, but it would not go to, back to committee because it would have failed. It could be brought up at a different time, but I wanted to vote on it tonight.
Well, I think the main motion is whether it stays on the agenda or not. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, it's whether it stays on or not, and I want it to stay on. I'm, I'm excluding it from the slate Commissioner Harrison created.
I'm really, really having, um, a very difficult time understanding how, how this is different from Commissioner Mansfield. Uh, Mr. Attorney, do you have an opinion?
He's trying to, we're trying to tack Mr. Harrison's, uh, pulling of these resolutions to a, one is whatever happens to be pulled, it goes back to its respective committee, and Mr. Jones is trying to say of that slew that's gonna go back to committee, he would like his to stay in, uh, stay on the agenda tonight, which is the, uh, Gen Ops number, uh...
All right, does everyone understand that, that this one will be treated differently than the others? All right. Is there anyone in the queue that wants to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, a point of information. I, I think that's really close, but I will make sure that there's nobody misunderstanding.
I just want to make sure that no one misunderstands. I, I, what he is saying is not that it's treated differently. I mean, in, in a sense, yes, but he's saying he wants to pull that from that line item veto of five different, right, five? Or several, he wants to sever it from what was just said, so we'll vote separately on that one for it to stay, and then we'll vote on these for them to stay. Does that make sense?
That's what we just said.
I, I know, but ye, yes, sir, but you said for it to be treated differently, and it wouldn't be treated differently because of Mr. Mansfield's amendment. I want to make sure that's clear, that that amendment holds true, and it is not treated at all differently in that case, and I just didn't want it to be misunderstood.
It's clear.
Thank you.
Don't confuse me anymore.
And I'm, I'm still in the queue, sir, if you don't mind, for the next one.
Mr. Becker, Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Jones, anything else on this amendment? All right, we'll put it on the board.
Just make a quick comment here. If, if this doesn't pass, the motion, the amendment that Mr. Mansfield made a second ago just needs to be brought up again for the full one. So, it, we'll take care of it, but right now, this is to, this is to take number three out of Mr. Harrison's original request.
Mr. Nguyen?
I'm on the main.
Mr. Jones?
I wanted to be clear what my intentions were. I think it's best chance of getting done, the job getting done is for us to pass it tonight in commission, because this was passed unanimously out of General Operations Committee, had, had good support, it was a no-brainer, and we, we took recommendations and made it easier to, to pass. And after next month, all the committees are gonna be reset. There's no guarantee any of this stuff's gonna come back up in committee, or if it is brought up in committee, it could be squashed in committee. So, my intentions were to get this to pass tonight so we can get this work done. It's a simple, simple job.
All right, uh, no one else in the queue? I'm a, uh, Commissioner Miller?
I just want to make everyone aware, maybe that may not have been here last month, that this was actually taking off the, taken off the agenda last month as well. So, this is the second month in a row it's been taken off, and the excuse this time is that we have too much to do, there's too much county business for the county commissioners that were elected to sit here to do. So, I'm not exactly sure why we're just passing the buck when we have a citizen that has trash, that has, where there was flooding, that has gone onto his property. It's gonna cost the county no money to go over there with a truck and a trailer and take it to the dump. I don't know why we can't take thirty seconds to vote yes to clean up county property and a citizen's property.
Anyone else speaking on this before we post it? Commissioner Teichner?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to say one more thing. The fact that it is, like, not only passing the buck, like what was just brought up, it's been passed two times, that's exactly right, I won't restate that, but the fact that there's, um, literally county junk that is washed onto city, uh, I, I, washed onto a citizen's property, it's ridiculous. So, not only does the citizen pay for taxes, are we saying that citizen's gonna...
Let's, uh, let's move on to the subject.
No, I, no, Mr. Chairman.
It's gonna be a long night, and I'm not gonna put up with this.
Mr. Chairman, not...
Please be waiting and be recognized. Let's move on with this.
Mr. Chairman, my last sentence, I promise, on this item. The fact that we are making this citizen pay taxes, and then are we also gonna push it down to where they had to pay separately in order to remove this junk that is the county's problem? I mean, not only did we charge them taxes, but that, and that's a, a hyphenated, uh, sentence, thank you.
Good. All right, anyone else speaking on this? All right, post it, please, clerk.
Each commissioner record your vote.
Twenty-four yes votes. All right, we are pulling that from the slate that will be voted on, and, uh, Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I think I just wanted to, to make mention that if there is anything that's pulled from the, I would ask that we were able to, to hear the public comments tonight if someone did sign up. But then also too, I think there was just some comments made earlier, and I don't want to rehash everything, but, uh, you know, a, as a committee chair, you can put things on the agenda for that committee. So, uh, the, the notion that these things just die and go nowhere and can never come back up, I, I think is, is very misleading, especially coming from, uh, committee chair people, uh, making those comments. So, um, that's, just wanted to point that out, and, uh, do ask that, that if anybody does sign up and something does get removed, if we could, uh, give them a few minutes as well, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Mansfield?
Just gonna restate my amendment still. I know it's, I guess, do I need to restate that amendment? That it passed, because Commissioner Jones has passed? It was, are we good if anything gets pulled off this agenda tonight, that it goes back to the committee from which it came? Is that our understanding?
What we're voting on...
I'm just clarifying the...
What we're voting on is every item except the one that was agreed upon by this body will be...
And should any of those go, be pulled off the agenda?
Will be pulled off.
Will go back to...
And will go back to the commission.
Cause my amendment, I'm just wanna clarify that.
Yes. Yes. Commissioner Teichner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was going to say one thing that would help us is, there's been multiple commissioners say that they wanted the people to have a chance to speak on these agenda items, and the easiest way to do that is just for us to not pull them off. Thank you.
All right, we will please not have any commotion from the audience. We will post, Commissioner Mansfield?
I want to move to sever each of these items individually that are left.
Second.
To vote on them separately.
Motion to sever each of these and consider them, and there is a second. Commissioner Shou?
Just, and this is just procedurally, since we've already voted overwhelmingly to keep the one, as the sever, I would just, given that, that the vote to sever, I would say that we exclude the one that we've all already voted to keep regardless. So just to amend, amend the motion that was just made there, that regardless of the others, we will take care of the Cotton Town issue and address that tonight, because we overwhelmingly voted on it.
Yes. It's the way I see it.
Okay.
All right, post that, clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Does not receive enough votes to sever, so we will post the main motion on the board at this time. This is to take it off the agenda tonight, but it'll go back to committee, and then probably back here at the appropriate time of the committee's decision.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
With 14 votes, they have been pulled for tonight from the agenda. Now, in regard to anyone who may have been here wanting to speak, I probably started a precedent that is not good, in that I've allowed leeway of people to speak if they came thinking they were going to get to speak. I've done that in the past. Tonight, I will, I will say again, it's according to our rules, it's off the agenda. I will, I would let people speak for three minutes on the subject that they are here to speak on, if there is no, if there's no one who objects from the commission, because it is a commission rule. Is there any objection?
I object, Mr. Ryan. I'd like to do five minutes, because I came here prepared for five minutes.
Object, totally.
All right, the motion is for five minutes. I don't know, okay. Commissioner Becker?
I have another item I want to discuss to remove from the agenda, so it's not on this topic.
Wait just a minute, we, we need to approve the agenda, the attorney says.
Correct. Yeah, so I, so, so I would like to make a motion to defer till next month's full commission meeting, item number E2, library board appointment.
Defer E2?
Defer to next month's full commission meeting.
All right, it's motion, is there a second? To defer that? There's a second? All right, Commissioner Nguyen? Not on that?
Not on that one.
Commissioner Shou?
Just want to note that we have somebody here who is, you know, I don't want to do this, because we have a lot to get to tonight, and I'm really trying not to, like, throw any stones, but we have somebody here tonight who came to present, they've been through the committee process. There's, there's no real need to defer this one. I, I don't understand why we would pull, why we would pull this. I really don't, and I know previously that you had mentioned that you, that you didn't, you know, that we're not here to debate, because we're just trying to get an agenda, which, which I understand, but, but man, I'd really like to understand why somebody who's taken the time to present themselves in front of the committee on committees, submitted a resume, put out a call on multiple times to have them speak to somebody, you know, we've got an open seat. I mean, I, I would just, we don't have to answer, because we got, we got lots of things to do, but I'd, I'd really like to understand that.
All right, Commissioner Mansfield?
I guess I'll ask a question. Why is this being deferred? I'd like to know why, why can't we vote on this tonight? Man, I just, I don't know if to make a motion.
Someone asked that part to be deferred.
Can't find out. I'd like, I'd like to know why. I'd like an explanation. We've asked for explanations before.
Well, if they choose to, they can, they don't have to. That was a motion that was made. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain. I, I think there's going to be, it's going to be a lengthy discussion. I envision it will be, and so, sort of, this is in the same vein as the pre, the previous ones we removed, unlike someone in the audience who said it's because I was stupid, it's, it's because of actually valid reasons, so thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've clearly got two different factions warring over this library board. I watched this man come and speak, you know, to, to the, to the committee on committees and, and have his name go through, and I've seen him talking to different people within both factions, trying to lobby for himself, and this is probably the best chance we're ever going to have to pass somebody that enough people on both sides can agree on. I don't see the reason for, for deferring this tonight and moving on down. I say let the man come up here and, and present, he's probably going to speak during public comments, and vote your conscience, yes or no? Just vote him up or down. No reason to pull it off.
All right, post that, clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
With 13 votes, it is deferred for tonight. All right. Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that we move budget ups to the top of the standing committee reports, so that it be the first, first committee that we, we hear from tonight.
Before all committees?
Yes, sir.
All right, the, the motion is to adjust the agenda to where a budget is the first committee report. Is there a second? Or a motion and a second? Seeing no one in the queue, please post that.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Receiving 16 affirmative votes, that's what we will do in regard to that committee report. Anything else in regard to the agenda before we vote? All right, we're positioning it now to vote on the agenda.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
That is a 15 to eight vote and does pass, so we have, we do have an agenda. Now, we're to the point of whether we relax our rules and allow, and I'm assuming that since this is a relaxation of the rules, it would be 13 votes, I mean, 16 votes, is that not true? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, certificate of recognition, and I know that these young people that have been sitting here have gotten a real education in regard to, to education. All right, resolution honoring Lisa Byington. We understand that she is not able to be here, so I would request that we vote on that. Do I have a motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post like sent. We'll take care of that. Mayor, would you like to speak to that?
All right, if I can get the Dearing family to join us up here. All right, it is my honor to, to recognize Haley and Declan Dearing. Haley's with us. Declan, he's unable to attend tonight, because he has to report to school, where he's going to be working with football team, so was unable to be here. So I want to read just a little bit about Haley. Haley, during her high school career at Beach High School, lettered in all four years in volleyball and softball. She played basketball as a freshman in her senior year. She was all-county volleyball, all-county softball, all-county basketball. She was Miss Softball in her senior year, an all-state team for softball, and has committed to play softball at Vols State. So congratulations, we'll read this, the Sumner County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 28th day of July 2025. Do hereby honor and congratulate Haley Dearing, Beach High School, for being named Miss Softball and for being named to the all-state team. And I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'm going to go ahead and, and, because he deserves this to be read. In addition to Haley's good work was Declan Dearing, her brother. He lettered all four years in beach football. He was state championship runner-up during his softball season. All four years that he played at Beach, they made the playoffs, and Declan earned the captain's award. He was strongest in his weight class, and he was this year's Courage Award by USA Today Sports Awards. And I will read Declan's. Sumner County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 28th day of July 2025. Do hereby honor and congratulate Declan Dearing of Beach High School for receiving the USA Today Sports Courage Award.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you.
Certainly a pretty amazing family. All right.
Absolutely. All right, so I'm going to go ahead, if don't mind, the Ensley family in Holly. Everybody else leave? Madeline? Okay. All right. That's fine, come on up here. All right, today I'm honored to present a joint proclamation honoring Mary Lanell Ensley for her dedicated service to Sumner County. And whereas Mary Lanell Ensley, Ensley, excuse me, served with dedication and distinction for 32 years as a valuable employee of the Register of Deeds Office of Sumner County, and whereas Mary's commitment to public service touched the lives of countless residents and colleagues throughout her long and fruitful career, and whereas she demonstrated exemplary, commitment to her duties in the Register of Deeds Office as deputy register, and whereas she was known for her kindness, professionalism, dedication, expertise on state law recording requirements, and will be deeply missed by all who had the privilege of knowing and working with her, and whereas Mary's dedication to Sumner County will serve as an inspiration for future generation of public service. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Sumner County Board of Commissioners and County Mayor John Isbell of Sumner County, that Mary be hereby honored for her decades of selfless service and dedication to Sumner County. Be it further proclaimed, that the deepest sympathies are extended to her family and the loved ones of Mary, acknowledging the profound loss to the community. Be it further proclaimed, this proclamation is a testimony to the appreciation and respect held for Mary by the Register of Holly Hemrick employees and residents of Sumner County.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I, we are at the point of the recognition of the public, which also tonight serves as the opportunity for our budget hearing, and those that are speaking on the budget, you have that opportunity to express yourself on the county budget. I would, I would suggest three minutes for anyone to speak, since these things are going back to committee and will be back here, where people have the opportunity to speak, but that's entirely up to the will of this body. Is there any objection to allowing them to speak three minutes? Okay. So are you making that informal motion, that we go ahead and let them talk? A motion and a second. You don't have to amend a suggestion, so, okay. All of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Put it on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, we will have five minutes for each speaker. I will remind you that because you speak tonight, you, you may come back. If this comes back through committees to the group, you, you may speak again on the subject at that time. When I call your name, if you'll come forward, you have five minutes to speak, and I would suggest, if, if you would, not suggest, but I would tell you that our rules are... suggest, if, if you would, uh, not suggest, but I would tell you that our rules are that you not, uh, call a commissioner by name or reference a commissioner directly, you just state your views on a particular opinion. John Gentry?
Just to make sure I'm on my place, there's term limits, right? Term limits, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, my name's John Gentry, and, um, talking about term limits, I, I appreciate Commissioner Mansfield, um, bringing this to the table, this is something that every American, black right, Christian, Jew, Democrat, Republican, doesn't matter, it's something that we're all united on, uh, that we, we all want to see term limits. I won't belabor too much of, of why we want it, but, you know, essentially without term limits politicians become entrenched, uh, allegiance to the Constitution, and the people surrender fidelity to campaign donors, uh, natural aversion to arduous and oppressive regulations and greater taxes, it surrenders to acceptance and more regulations and more taxes that we see. What I'm, what I mostly want the commission to consider about though, is our, is our state constitution, and, and how to consider that, you know, we all know, it's not disputed, like ninety percent of the people want term limits. In Article One, Section One, power is inherent in the people, and we have at all times an unalienable, indefeasable right to reform, alter, or abolish the government, we can alter our form of government and put in place term limits, it's a constitutional right. Section twenty-three, we have a right to instruct our representatives, and most people don't know this, in Article One, Section Thirty-one, it lays out the boundaries of the state, it goes around the whole perimeter, so it's really long and nobody ever reads it, but at the end of it, it says, "Over these lands, the people have the right of soil and the right to exercise sovereignty." I'm not aware of any other state constitution that explicitly says the people have the right to exercise sovereignty, and so, you know, what does that mean? We have the right to, to exercise sovereignty? Thomas Jefferson said that the Tennessee Constitution is the least imperfect, and it's the most Republican, we have the best constitution, and this is one of the reasons. So, on the, on the right to instruct and the right to, to exercise sovereignty, they thought about putting the right to instruct in the first Congress, and, and putting that in our federal constitution, the right to instruct representatives, they decided not to, but we have it in Tennessee, it's in our state constitution. And during that debate, this is August fifteenth, seventeen eighty-nine, and he said, "Do gentlemen not conceive, where the instructions may be so general as to come from all of our constituents? If they do, it is the sovereign will, for gentlemen will not contend that sovereignty vested in the legislature, the friends and patrons of this constitution have always held that sovereignty resides in the people at all times." So, this is the sovereign will of the people, we want term limits, ninety percent of us want term limits, it is the sovereign will, and we can make up, you know, whatever excuse, oh, it takes time to learn how to, how to do the job, if you don't know how to do the job, you don't have any business running for office, there's nothing hard about being in, in an elected position, you do what's the right thing to do, you do what the Constitution allows, and nothing more, and you do what the majority of the people who elected you want you to do, it's not a hard job, you don't need to learn it. I think there's, there's so many excuses about why we don't need term limits coming from our elected officials, but I want you to know this, it's the sovereign will, and, and when we say no to term, to, to term limits, our elected are saying sovereignty does not vest in the people, it's vested in them, and, and that's not what our country is about. So, I, I encourage, uh, that, that we vote in favor of this measure and make recommendation to the General Assembly to put in, in place term limits, starting, starting with our county commissions, and I would, you know, one of, one of the arguments about, uh, term limits, it works against good elected officials just as much as it works against the bad ones. And I would suggest adding language, uh, and I wrote this down, "No person shall serve more than two terms in the county commission, except if a candidate for a third or more terms presents a nominating petition with a count of nominating signatures greater than one-half of the voters in the last election for the same seat." And so, that puts a high hurdle provision that I think only the good ones can get over, if they want to stay a third or more terms, and you got half the people that nominate them, let's keep them in office, and I think it's a great way to have a hybrid of putting in place term limits and a way to keep the good ones out there. So, commissioners, thank you for your time on that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, your address.
So, is this on public recognition then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, this is, uh, this is a second issue I wanted to talk about, another, another one that I really...
Just, just a moment, uh, his address is two oh eight Navajo Court, Goodlettsville, Tennessee, uh, okay, go ahead on that.
Okay.
Could you make this brief?
Brief?
You've used your five minutes, it's five minutes per person, if you'll just make this brief, I still want you to go.
I don't see anything, I was hoping for, yeah, I'm prepared.
Go ahead, go ahead, go.
So, um...
Mr. Chairman, one point of order, I mean, I hate to say this, we have to let everybody speak twice if they said wanted to.
It's not two issues.
Ten, ten, that's, there's, there's, five minutes, five minutes per person to speak about what members want to do, and then we're to go out for...
Uh, the only way that I know to settle this is to put on the board, our rule, uh, Mr. Gentry, is five minutes, and if they overrule me, then that's, I go with that, I respect the, the will of this commission, whether I agree or not. So, if you will, put that on the board and just see if it's five minutes flat, or if we're going to give it more time, yes or no.
I have a question, if we vote for this, is this changing all the rules or is it a one-time instance because he didn't understand making another? He did ask...
Because he doesn't understand, I'm trying to help him, so if... We're trying to help him. We understand, we understand. Okay, all right, uh...
Each commissioner record your vote.
It does not receive a favorable vote, it's twelve to eleven, so I... Thirteen, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, for, for those in the gallery, this, this is about a proposed rule change by, by Commissioner Mansfield, right now the rule says, uh, that citizens may address the commission, just like I'm doing right now, uh, for any item on the agenda, and implied in that rule, and, and I would state more correctly, uh, unlawfully implied in that rule, is that citizens cannot address legislative body on issues that are, that are not on the agenda, and, and for those in the gallery out there, the, I, I hope that you really listen carefully to what I'm talking about here, this is probably the most important civics lesson that you've ever had in your entire life, so, this, this rule, you know, this, citizens being able to address the body, you know, this isn't something that, that we, you know, gratuitously, some privilege that the commission gives us, this is actually a constitutionally protected right, in our state constitution, Article One, Section Twenty-three, says citizens have a right to peaceably assemble to our, together for our common good, to instruct our representatives, and here's the most important part, to apply to those invested with the powers of government for redress of grievance or other proper purposes by address or remonstrance, and a remonstrance is a formal written protest, so you can make that application to anyone who's invested with the powers of government, either by orally addressing a body like I'm doing right now, or by doing a written remonstrance, this is a constitutionally protected right, and to say, well, just because it's not on the agenda, you don't get to exercise that right, uh, that's not the way it works. So, what this right is, uh, the right to assemble, people think of street protests, that's not what it's about, it's about coming together in our churches, on social media, and talking about what do we want government to do or stop doing, that's what the right of assembly really is, and then we think about what are, what are the instructions that we want to give to our representatives out there, we write those up, and we make the application, we present it to a member of the body, and we're on the agenda, and we get to orally address, and, and our constitution is, is broad, it says, "Apply to those invested with the powers of government," that's not any single commissioner, not one of you is invested with the powers of government on your own, it is the legislative body, it's the entire body that's invested with the powers of government, and this is an incredibly powerful constitutional right that we have to orally address, present our grievances or other proper purposes, our good ideas about, you know, what do we want government to do or stop doing, and I'm, I'm literally the first person to exercise this right since eighteen fifty, this right has been so oppressed for so long, it has been wiped from our collective memory, and so we end up, you know, we don't get to speak on something unless it's on the agenda, because we haven't been taught about our constitutional rights, and we, and we have this, you know, unlawful implied, implied meaning of a rule that says we can only speak on items that are, that are on the agenda. If, if the body has any questions about this, I would invite them to, to walk, I'm, I'm literally the top expert in this entire country, on the right of the people to petition, this right exists to be applied to the General Assembly, our Tennessee House and Senate, and to the Congress, like literally citizens used to petition the Congress in the eighteen hundreds, and so I encourage the commission to come back into compliance with our state constitution, this isn't something gratuitous, some gratuitous privilege that you're giving us, I'm asking you to come back in compliance with the constitution and uphold the right of the people to petition government for redress or other proper purpose. So, I, I thank you for your time, commissioners, and I encourage you to vote in favor of this rule change, and allow the citizens to exercise a constitutionally protected right, and address the body on non-agenda issues, thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Brad Williams?
Hello, commissioners, uh, y'all have got a long night ahead of you, I will try not to take too much of your time, I will be quick, um, I don't have a whole lot of opinions, I have a lot of numbers, um, in front of you, I put a very color-coded spreadsheet, um, for the fire department proposal budget, I know you're passing budgets tonight, uh, no one that I know of has talked to me about this, but I'm just really hoping from the floor, somebody will, uh, talk about upping the fire department's allotment this year. So far this year, we're staying at the last year's numbers, which is in the pink at the bottom, of a total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is, we're grateful for, and thank you for that, but if there's any way possible, um, back early in the spring, uh, one of the commissions here, which, one of the commissioners, which I don't believe I'm allowed to say his name, uh, did make a suggestion that we go to ninety thousand dollars per station, uh, that times our normal thirteen stations in this county, would bring us to one point one seven million dollars, which is a great, a number for us, that would really help us, our fire departments in the county are so far behind everywhere else, not only in the county itself, from cities and everywhere else, but in the, in the state of Tennessee, um, of all the ninety-five or ninety-six counties, Sumner County is on the lowest when it comes to funding per capita of human being in this county. Just again, for, uh, quick numbers, uh, Sumner County has a population of two hundred thousand people, uh, altogether, there are about seventy thousand in the county itself outside of city limits, if you figure six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, our normal amount, you get to about three dollars and twenty-five cents per person, that the fire department receives, that's in the entire county, so when I hear about citizens getting double taxed because they live in a city, I am, I don't want anybody to be taxed, um, I'm sorry for that, but we're talking three dollars and twenty-four cents for the entire year, I don't feel that bad, uh, people's, if you live in a city, you drive in the county, you visit friends in the county, you're gonna have an instance where you run into the volunteer fire department, you have heart attacks at your friend's house in the county, you get a fire, a firefighter when that happens, if you look at the, uh, the proposed number of one point one seven, that would only raise that amount if you look in the entire county to five dollars and eighty-three cents, so, the entire population of the county, the double taxation, what we're all worried about is a dollar and fifty cents per person, I feel, I think it's worth it to help our firefighters out, we've got fire trucks that are forty years old that should be in the junk pile, but we're still driving them, we've got people who can't afford turnout gear and training, but we're still making it happen because we're really good at stretching a dollar, there's no better place to put your money in this county than the volunteer fire department if you want it taken care of. Couple more numbers for you, so I'm trying to be fast, the population of Hendersonville is sixty-three thousand by twenty-twenty, is when that number came from, I believe, their budget is fourteen million dollars for their fire department, that's a lot of money, but it's a very good fire department, one of the best in the state, that breaks down into two hundred and twenty dollars per person in that city, so I'm talking five dollars, in Hendersonville you're paying two hundred and twenty, the city of Galton, there's about fifty thousand people in that city, with a budget of around ten million, I hope Chief Beeman doesn't get me for getting that number wrong, but, uh, that's about a hundred and ninety-eight dollars per person in the city limits of Galton, you are well protected in those two areas, Hendersonville and Galton, I can get into White House in Portland again, very well funded, your volunteer fire department gets five, uh, excuse me, three dollars and twenty-four cents per person, come visit some of these fire departments, we're struggling, we're not gonna make it much longer, volunteerism is hard enough, but when you're asking people to do something with nothing, it's harder to get people to stretch, I've heard talk that we need to do better marketing to get better volunteers, to get better funding, you don't want a firefighter marketing, we're not good at that, we're fighting fires, for ISO ratings, if you've ever heard of that, we try to lower your ISO ratings, when we do that, it saves you money, every year from homeowners insurance, uh, right now our ISO ratings are around sixes and sevens throughout this county, if we can get them down to a five, that'll save millions across this county, but we have to do two hundred and twenty hours of training a year, just in fires, we have to do thirty hours of medical training a year, sixteen hour of driver training, that's a lot of time to dedicate to a job you're not getting paid for, and then go out and market, and then do a pancake breakfast, and then beg for money, we can't do it all, we have got to have help from these county commissioners, from these tax dollars, um, nothing ever changes in committee for the fire department, the reason that is, is because a lot of the people who are in these committees live in cities, it doesn't affect you, but the people on this floor, the ones who live in the county, you're the ones that make this happen a lot for us, the only time the fire department has ever gotten a raise in this county is from this floor, so I would really ask that you take into consideration these numbers for when you go consider the budget, thank you.
Thank you, Mike McClard, Mike, if you'll try to hold it to five. If you'll try to hold it to five, please.
I signed up for four different things, do I get twenty minutes?
I'm not even, I'm not even gonna answer that.
Mike McClard, one oh two, T L G trail, Hendersonville, um, I, I was gonna also speak about the, uh, uh, removing the trash, that's something that I, I think is a no-brainer, I'm not sure why it becomes so contentious, uh, I also think that, uh, term limits is a great thing, I've, I've said for years that the only thing that's gonna save this country is term limits, uh, and being able to speak, since he's not gonna give me my twenty minutes, uh, I still think, I still think it, you know, every, everybody deserves their voice, uh, and I'm trying to watch my time, Mr. Hyde, uh, what I'd like to really speak about is this multi-lease for the, uh, property, uh, Moonlight Properties, for the Innovation Center, I believe what it's being called, I, personally, I think, I, I think it's a good idea, I, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with it, I, I do have problems with the costs, and this not being, using the young lady's word that spoke at the last commission, me fleshed out, um, uh, you know, the only thing you have that I've seen, y'all may have something else on your desk, is, is the contract, and it's, it is heavily laden for the city, or, excuse me, the county, to put up all costs, right down to the asphalt and the pavement, uh, at the ten, the end of this ten-year lease, that pavement's probably gonna be eighteen years old, maybe, and, and it's, a lot of it's gonna fall apart in that amount of time, um, there's no cost been given to anything other than the rental, starts out, um, I think overall some like three and a half million, four... Starts out, I think overall, some like three and a half million, four million over the 10-year period. But, you know, the, the, the ability to heat and cool two buildings, one for 25,000 square feet and one for 31,000 square feet, it's gonna be enormous. Insurance, the maintenance on the building, you're gonna have to have staff. You just can't open up a building to students. I'm very concerned about, there, there's nothing in there about how the kids in the northern part of the county, Westmoreland, Portland, White House, and you guys that represent those areas, I, I would think that would be a great concern of yours. The, it, it looks to me like, since most kids, not all of them, but most kids don't get their license until the late in their ju, sophomore year. I know that's the way it was when I was in school and, and most everybody that turned 16 late in their sophomore years. So this is basically, if you don't provide transportation, this is gonna be basically used for juniors and seniors if they're expected to drive. And as, as a parent of three boys, it would, I would be scared to death to have them drive from Portland, White House, and, uh, Westmoreland on a daily basis to, to go to this. And, and again, I'm not against it. I just think it really should be fleshed out more. I, I know I was just talking to one of the commissioners after the budget meeting the other night, and he and I were talking about this. And, and he said that, uh, he thought a lot of this would be done virtually. Well, and it probably, probably can be, but that could be done now. I mean, anything could be taught virtually that didn't have a lab or a flight simulator or something like that. And I know Dr. Langford had mentioned that he'd had conversations with Meta and some of the other companies that were interested in getting involved in this. I mean, is there any agreements? I, I see Dr. Langford's here tonight. Maybe he'll speak and tell us if he's got any of these agreements in writing. Any MOUs, that's a term y'all like to use. And it just seems to me like that it, it just needs to be put together a little bit further before you guys vote on it. I, I know, you know, based on what I've seen, you're probably gonna pass it. But one of the other commissioners in the budget meeting the other night said that, that when he started out, he wasn't, he didn't think this was a great idea. And you correct me if I'm wrong. But then after he listened to it, he thought it was, and he was a big fan of the entrepreneurial spirit. And, and I am too. Entrepreneurs and small business built this country. And we wouldn't be where we are today if it wasn't without them. But those small businesses and those entrepreneurs put up their own money. They didn't use taxpayers' monies to do it. So again, I, I have prayed about this and, and, and I'm on the fence on it. But I think, I think it's a good idea, but you really need to be looking at what the costs are. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Denning.
Good evening, Denise Denning, address 1305 Meadowbrook. Coming, commissioners, coming to you tonight as a taxpayer here in Sumner County in the great volunteer state of Tennessee. Tonight, I'd like to refer to the budget for the volunteer fire departments and the impact. My family owns Meadowbrook Game Farm, over 1,000 contiguous acres directly in Sumner County. As well as 13 houses, only one of which is in Gallatin, property taxes that we personally pay approach 50,000 a year. In my area, the northernmost part of the county, the unincorporated Oak Grove area, touches all addresses. We have Westmoreland, my next-door neighbor's Portland, this one over here is Beth Page, this one back here is Gallatin. We rely solely on the local volunteer fire department, departments. Please allow me to share some recent events. House fires, silo fire, corn dust explosion, tractor fire, field and wood fire, motor vehicle accidents, including a semi versus a four-wheeler, unresponsive people, diabetic emergencies, strokes, heat and cold injuries, gunshot wound, a drowning, and two DOAs. These were all directly on our property. This isn't down the street. This is my home property. All calls were answered by the volunteers. We don't want to lose any volunteer fire department because they run out of money without our local department and their quick response. Even though most of the incidents were horrible, all of these could have been catastrophic. In our rural areas, we are very thankful for the emergency services we receive and we appreciate all of the support that you give. Our family, our family is not opposed to a fire fee if it was ever approached to us or ever asked. I don't think it's ever been brought up to anybody, but I would pay for it just to have somebody to respond. I pray that the seated committee will continue to approve the volunteers and the recent proposed funding option brought to you by Mr. Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for not being able to interpret this name. Elizabeth at 160 South Tunnel. My apologies. If you'll state your name and address, please.
I'm Elizabeth Broadway. I live at 160 South Tunnel, Portland. I'm here to talk about the school budget and playgrounds and reallocating some money in there. Due to this being a school registration night, many of our kids who with disabilities, their parents weren't able to come, elementary people. I spoke at the last meeting and told you a little about my family and my daughter. She's in a wheelchair. We go to Benny Bill's, but I'm gonna read another mom who would like to have her voice heard who can be here tonight. My six-year-old daughter Juliet attends Station Camp Elementary. She has Down Syndrome, autism, and restricted mobility issues. She uses a walker to help her get around as she is unable to stand or walk unassisted. Juliet loves playing outside with her friends, swinging and going down the slides. The current playground at SCE is sadly unsuitable for her to access as her walker can't travel over the mulch. While it is true she is included by being taken to recess in a wagon with her classmates, she is not accommodated. Sitting in the wagon at recess is not the least restrictive environment for her and greatly inhibits her independence to access the playground equipment with her walker because it's so unstable. We need an outdoor foam floor playground like at Mary's Magical Park or Miracle Park in Gallatin for safe accessibility for Juliet and every student in every Sumner County school. Carl and Amy Olson. Our kids are not charity cases, but this county continues to prove that they believe that when they find money for these playgrounds, they want us to find money for these playgrounds when we already have it and are choosing to do something else with it. These kids are United States citizens with the legal rights equal to all of yours. This county has had 35 years to start implementing these laws. Instead, they've ignored them. Tennessee has increased legal recess requirement time, which I love and I'm all for, but it now also means more time for my daughter and other kids like her to not be able to play with their peers. I would like to remind you that our sports and booster activities are all recreational and elective activities, not state laws. Our, our disabled elementary kids deserve better. I really hope at bare minimum, you choose to move the funds of $500,000 that are currently in our budget to cover booster costs, move that to our playgrounds. But even more so, I hope you're listening to and understanding the laws. I know a fellow mom has emailed all of you. And I really hope that you recognize that you are continually ignoring and breaking these laws by not finding the funds that we have. I don't care what you say, we have them. If we can find $500,000 for boosters, we have money for these kids. My daughter is in a wheelchair. She uses a walker and we went to Benny Bill's and they graciously added a runoff thing before school started, but she literally cannot walk through without falling over because it is graded improperly. It is mulch that has rivets in it that are beyond ridiculous. She doesn't have access to the side, to the, the track that they have and everything else. We need to do better for our kids. And yes, my daughter's in a wheelchair, but there are other disabilities that are included that kids need to have access for as far as playground equipment and everything else. So yes, flooring is important. I have a son who has autism. How he plays with his peers is different than how neurotypical kids play with their peers. We have the money. We need to change where it's being allocated to. Thank you.
Franco Valentino.
I will be brief. My name is Franco Valentino. I live at 1011 Delray Trail in Hendersonville, and I've been a Sumner County resident for 16 years. My bride Melissa and I have raised two boys here, 15 and 18. My youngest is a proud Beach Buccaneer, and my oldest is a Merrill High graduate, now attending University of Tennessee Knoxville. Go Vols! I'm here tonight as a candidate to serve on the Music City Airport Authority Board. Our last monthly, or, excuse me, our wonderful airport community showed me firsthand how it serves as more than just an aviation facility. It's become a social hub for Sumner Countyans. Our last monthly fly-in breakfast drew record-breaking 500 people from around the state. I invite you all to join the next breakfast on August 9th from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., but get there early because we run out of food pretty fast. In my 30 years in aviation and for nearly two decades at Music City Airport, I've been deeply involved with the flying community. I've served in Civil Air Patrol as a pilot and provided orientation flights to our bright young Sumner County cadets. It's also been my distinct pleasure to serve and help train our local law enforcement agencies on emergency hijacking procedures at the airport alongside with our highly capable airport manager, Mr. Jeff Dunham. Professionally, my background is network engineering and project management with over 25 years of experience in serving organizations like the Panama Canal, IBM, and AT&amp;T. Recently, our airport manager, Jeff Dunham, and board chair, Matt Harris, voluntold me to help improve some of the airport's digital infrastructure. We identified some challenges in both the hardware and software systems that needed immediate attention, and we successfully upgraded those systems to modern security standards in about two weeks. During this project, Matt mentioned the airport's growth plan, which includes new, more advanced communication services for pilots and a greater need for technical oversight due to the continued growth for our little airport, which is now designated a national airport by the FAA's rating system. With these challenges in mind, I'd be honored to continue to serve our community, which has given my family so much joy and friendship over the years. So thank you for your consideration.
Victoria Sutton.
Hello, I'm Victoria Sutton. I live at 195 Scattersville Road in Portland. I grew up and attended school in Sumner County, graduated from Christian Community School in 2012, and now I'm a mother to two young children and I live in Portland. I'm also a physical therapist assistant, and I've served Sumner County families for the past eight years in that capacity. Therefore, I would like to state from a personal and a professional standpoint that it's not only shameful, but also incredibly illegal that not one elementary school in this county has an ADA compliant or realistically accessible playground for disabled kids. We have the funds and the ability to help these children in our community who are already fighting battles that a lot of adults could not even imagine. And it's shameful that our school's funds have obviously not been allocated with these kids in mind. Even at a brand-new school that was just built, Liberty Creek, this same exact issue persists. Children with disabilities deserve to have the same access to education and play that their able-bodied peers have. And that's not personal rhetoric. It's not gratuitous. It's the law. 25, $250,000 is not gonna fix this issue, and I would like to voice my support for an additional 500,000 to start immediately addressing these issues. But just know that the mothers and the health professionals of Sumner County will continue showing up and making our voices heard until our children are growing up in a place that is mindful of everyone's needs regardless of their physical ability. As a county that can afford to spend $30 million solely on athletics, we can and should do better. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thomas Akers.
Good evening. Thomas Akers, 932 Lori Lane, Gallatin. I come to you guys tonight as a representative of the Judicial Commissioners or Magistrates Department. Over the last couple of years, as I've prepared our budgets, I've requested one additional full-time position for that, for that department with no success yet. I'm here tonight to ask you to place that on our, our budget as it was previously requested in the last budget workshop. A little bit about that, what I can tell, over the last eight years, we have yet to add another full-time position. And I don't think I have to tell you guys what this county's done over the last eight years. We service over 16 law enforcement agencies and seven courtrooms here in the county as well as the citizens. So I'm asking you to please help us to help these law enforcement officers and our citizens. Thank you.
Kevin Kortner.
Kevin Kortner, I live at 106 Mont V. Drive in Hendersonville. We're lucky enough to live in an area with several inclusive playgrounds. Mary's Magical Place, Miracle Park Playground at Northfield, Crossroads Church in Westmoreland, Rachel's Garden in Glitzville, and others. The string tying these facilities together that goes overlooked is the fact that playgrounds at our schools are not an option for many children. The families that spearheaded these projects can attest to that, along with years of unsuccessfully pushing for more inclusive playgrounds at their children's schools. The burden of providing inclusive playgrounds should not fall on parents of handicapped children any longer. My family enjoys going to several of these playgrounds when we have free time, but a school playground serves an entirely different purpose. Every single student in every single elementary school participates at recess every single day, most of which is held on that school's playground. Right now, many of our school playgrounds unintentionally send a message to children with disabilities. You can watch, but you can't join. Imagine being a child and watching your classmates run, climb, and laugh knowing that you're left out, not because you lack the desire, but because the equipment or surface simply wasn't built with you in mind. I don't have to imagine this. I hear it every day when my son gets home. Those of us in this room have the power and the responsibility to change that. The school board has approved money in the budget up for approval this evening, which is a good start, but it's also a long way from what's needed to remedy this issue. Any funds available from this board and others should be added to that amount to continue the process, and funds need to be set aside in future budgets to do the same. Put aside all the talk and the priorities of school boards and local governments are easy to see if you look at budget line items. Athletics are well represented on that metric. I get it. I actually agree as a parent of other children that are involved in school athletics. But this is something that also needs to be higher on that list. When we design for inclusion, we don't just benefit students with disabilities, we create better environments for all children. Inclusive playgrounds foster understanding and friendship across differences from the earliest ages. There's an invisible world out here of special needs families. You go about your daily life without ever realizing it exists until one day you're thrust into it and your eyes are open to the minute difficulties of everyday life you previously took for granted. We're blessed to be a part of this world, but I wouldn't wish it on anyone. And we will not go away. We will not stop advocating for our children. We will not stop trying to open others' eyes to these issues. Let's give all our students the chance to play, to grow, and to belong because every child deserves that joy. And I'm also wondering what the baseball team did because this has gotta be worse than running sprints. Thank you.
Michael, Michael Zenzar.
Chairman, members of the council. I'm Michael Zenzar. I've resided in Sumner County since October 1977. I regularly vote in both primary and general elections. I currently reside in 914 Farrington Way, Gallatin, Tennessee. On the subject of term limits, this is my very first time to attend a meeting of this commission, and I was motivated to attend because of the vote on term limits. So I'm just keenly disappointed at the antipathy toward the First Amendment I see from this council. I've been a fan of term limits for years. 82% of all Americans support term limits. It's the most popular partisan issue, bipartisan issue in America. The original founding ideas of the framers, they did not want career politicians. They wanted people from all walks of life who could serve for a short time and then go back and live under the laws they made. They wanted rotation in office. With term limits, there would be no more squatting in office for 30, 40, or 50 years. As my political hero Ronald Reagan said, "The only experience you get in politics is how to be political." is how to be political." Term limits give more people with real-world experience the chance to serve and make an impact. Most states where term limits have passed, like Florida, have very high scores for fiscal health. They're performing well, while states run by professional politicians like Illinois are deeply in debt, and this filters down to the local level. Term limits break up the relationships and connections with lobbyists. Term limits break those connections. I promise you that if term limits were on a secret ballot, the overwhelming majority of citizens of Sumner County would vote in favor of term limits. In the city of Gallatin, the mayor and the members of the city council are subject to term limits of two, four-year terms. On the subject of public comment of non-agenda items, one of the risks of representative democracy is that elected officials may favor the narrow partisan interests of their most powerful supporters, or choose to advance their own personal interests instead of viewing themselves as faithful agents of their constituents. A robust right to petition is designed to minimize such risks. By being forced to acknowledge and respond to petitions from ordinary persons, officials become better informed and must openly defend their positions, enabling voters to pass a more informed judgment. The students here tonight, you've witnessed the suppression of freedom of expression. You've witnessed the suppression of the First Amendment, of the Constitution of the United States of America, and what distinguishes the United States of America from all other democracies is the First Amendment. They don't have the First Amendment in Canada, they don't have it in England. We are unique in that we have the First Amendment. Now, on the, on the subject of the athletic booster debt payoff, now, I had lunch today with another longtime resident of, how am I doing on time? Of Sumner, Sumner County, and he was bragging to me over lunch how he was aware of this bailout of the boosters clubs. He said, you know, "Our club, at the high school where I attended, we've paid off all of our projects, we've elected to buy things, and we've paid them off." In fact, today, he made another personal $600 donation to help his particular club. Whoever with other booster club decided to buy a Jumbotron, I'm sure that club, they should pay it off themselves. It's, it's kind of like your, your children. You know, I'll, I'll just go ahead and break the rule now and ask forgiveness later, and that's exactly how I look at this booster thing. Thank you all for this time, and I certainly hope I get a chance to come back and support a vote in favor of term limits. Thank you.
Angela Holmes. And I might remind everyone who is coming up to speak that on the monitor that you can't see out there is the time that you have in the right corner there.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Angela Holmes. I live in Westmoreland at two-thirty-six JW Thompson Road. I had a nice speech prepared, but given that the library board candidate was off the, removed from the agenda, I'm not sure how much this is going to mean, but I'm going to go ahead and go through it. I graduated from Westmoreland High School in nineteen-eighty-seven. I packed my little Dotson, and I drove up to Washington, D.C., and I worked for the federal government for thirty-three years, and I put myself through school. So, I am a small-town girl, and in my humble opinion, I became successful, and I'm very proud of that, especially being from Westmoreland, which is a town I'm very, very proud of and love living there. I was able to work remotely, full-time, and I came back to Westmoreland in two thousand and eleven to raise my children, because the town is one of the best places to raise kids. And in February, this past February, I retired from the federal government, and I saw a posting on the Sumner County website for a library director in Westmoreland and one in Hendersonville. And I did apply for the Westmoreland position and had interviews with three of the board members. I guess they were also considered the Personnel Committee. And it was very lengthy interviews with, with each of them, and a week later, I was told that I was offered the position pending the library board's approval. And I understood that. And I came to this room thinking I had to check the box, get the vote, and I was told after that I'd go upstairs and get badged. That did not happen. The board, half of the board members felt that myself and Emily, who will be up here shortly, were not qualified, and they wanted to interview us again, even though the Personnel Committee pushed us forward. So, why am I here? I'm, I want to request that you all intervene, if you can, with the library board, because the position description that was posted on the Sumner County website shows that a bachelor's degree with a master of library and information science is needed, or the person needs to obtain a library certification within five years of employment. And I was prepared to do that. I, I do want to let you know very quickly, I have a Bachelor of Arts in history. I managed high, high-level, mission-critical, high-value government contracts. I worked with DOD. I have a PMP, Project Management. I'm qualified. I, I know I haven't worked in a library, but I was, was interviewed. And I just want to let, I, I would like to request that the, that you all really get involved with the library board. Joanna is a very good chair. She, I don't know her very well, but she has her work cut out for her with her board members. Half of them argue with her, half of them don't know the process, and it's been very disheartening and sad to go through this process. And I have worked in government, and I get it. And I, I thank you for listening to me and putting up with me. That's it. Thank you.
Emily Higdon.
Emily Higdon. My address is two-eighty Rockbridge Road in Gallatin. So, I'm here tonight as the candidate for the Executive Director position for the Hendersonville Public Library. I have a Bachelor of Journalism degree, as well as a Master of Arts in Education, with over twenty-three years of work experience in the latter. I have always felt that it is my duty to give back to my community, and I have accomplished that by being an active member of the Junior Service League of Gallatin for twenty-one years, serving on their board for nineteen years. Having been a lifelong resident of Sumner County, I have a vested interest in helping my community thrive by supporting the institutions that serve as cornerstones to its citizens, in this case, public libraries. Both the Westmoreland and Hendersonville libraries have been operating without directors for several months, and Angela and I have been involved in the selection process since May, when we applied for the executive director positions. In mid-June, we were interviewed individually by each member of the Personnel Committee, which was a three-person committee, and an offer was presented, presented to us to take the executive director positions as well. And it was going to be voted on at the July the ninth meeting. However, at the meeting, some of the trustees expressed an interest in getting to know us before voting. So, to allow for this, a library board Personnel Committee was planned for July the fifteenth, and an invitation was extended to the entire library board so that they could have the opportunity to question us and just have a free discourse of conversation. No board members outside of the Personnel Committee attended the meeting, but the goal was still to vote on the selected candidates at the July the eighteenth special-called library meeting. Unfortunately, only four members attended, so without a quorum of five, a vote could not be taken. Hopefully, the third time will prove to be the charm, and the vote will take place at a special-called library board meeting later this week on Thursday or Friday. Over the course of the last two months, both Angela and I have proven ourselves to be dedicated stewards. We are committed to work alongside and to collaborate with the entire library board. Most of all, we are excited about the prospect of serving the Sumner County community in the capacity as executive directors, and would like nothing more than the approval of the board in order to fill the vacancies and allow these two libraries to operate at their full potential. Thank you.
Steve Waszalowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Steve Waszalowski. I live at one-oh-two Judson Drive, Hendersonville. Speaking today regarding my candidacy for the open position on the library board, I want to thank the whole commission for the opportunity today, and I'll be brief, I know y'all got a long night. A little about me, I'm married, three young children, all under six, and I got fourth on the way due in January. I grew up in Everett, Washington. My wife's from Pittsburgh, and we moved to Sumner County about four years ago and bought a house on the Indian Lake Peninsula in Hendersonville. Were parishioners at Arleigh Lake Catholic Church. My personal career experience is exposure to entrepreneurship and hard work at a very young age. My dad owned an industrial painting company, and by the time I was in high school and college, I was working for him on summers and weekends. This led me to eventually start my own company, and then eventually brought me here where I started Paintjet. Paintjet is a construction robotics startup that I co-founded. Thing I love about that is we work with painters, laborers, all the way up to PhD roboticists, and so we bring people from all walks of life together to try to solve complex problems. Why I get involved, why on the library board, is that I see it as a great opportunity. I've lived all over the country. I love Sumner County. Me and my wife are going to stay in Sumner County, we're going to raise our kids here, and I think the library board's a great place to kind of give back and get involved. I grew up walking to the library in Everett. My kids go to the library, they were at the library today. And I see it as kind of one of these places where we have people trying to get to the same direction, which is a great library system that we all can enjoy and, and be safe place for our kids, and maybe we disagree on how to get there. So, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time.
Jackson Goddard.
All right, here we go. All right, without further ado, all right. Before you, before I start reading this, before I begin reading this message, I would like to make an announcement. My first home game will be on September fifth, if you guys want to attend. And raise your hand. Guys, raise your hand. All right, all right, here we go. Without further ado, all right. My name is Jackson Goddard. I live at two-three-three-nine-eight New Hope Road, Hendersonville, Tennessee. I have autism and have been in special education for my entire school career. I currently attend Beach High School and will be entering my junior year next week. Because of a few teachers and administrators, I will be allowed this year to be the buckey, the mascot, at Beach High School. When I was little in elementary school in California, my friend Rachel was in a wheelchair and missed a lot of school because of operations on her legs and back. We didn't have a playground or recess area, area that she could play, that she could play in with, so Ms. Julie would walk her around, would walk her around the track, or she could play in the OT room alone. I think my friend Rachel is just as important as my friends and classmates who play in stadiums. We all deserve a great place to play, no matter what challenges we do or don't have. Please vote to give the money to play. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Wayne Drown.
I'm Wayne Drown, eleven-twenty North Corners Road, Portland. I'm here to speak on the volunteer fire departments. I'm in Oak Grove Fire District. I'm the president of the board at this time, and it was disappointing when we looked at the budget this year, at the funding that was going to be given to the volunteer fire departments, especially since, I want to thank the commissioners in the last two years, and a little bit before, but definitely the last two years, we've gotten raises. I say more money to the volunteer fire departments, and we appreciate that. Last year, we got a very sizable raise. I say sizable, as much as the volunteer fire departments are underfunded, it was sizable based on what we got the year before, not necessarily anywhere near what the volunteer fire departments need to be adequately funded to provide the service they provide. But thanks for the last two years. But the current council funding for Oak Grove is twenty-five percent less than last year. And we were in hopes last year that we got that, and we've had conversations with the committees and council members about the underfunding and how we needed, knew we couldn't make a leap to the adequate funding, since it's been underfunded this many years, but that we would hopefully get some increases and move in that direction, not just cover inflation. But as you can see, a twenty-five, twenty-five percent reduction with inflation growth we're having in the area, that doesn't help us move towards adequate funding. It limits our ability, the underfunding limits our ability to keep up with inflation and growth, to even keep up with the equipment that we've got. Two of the, two of the front-line apparatus we have, one of them is twenty-seven years old, and one of them is thirty years old. If we had, what we do have tags on them, but we could put antique tags on them by state law. We, our PP, our personal protective equipment, what we call bunker gear, what we wear to protect us as we go into structural fires to save lives and protect property, it has to be replaced every ten years. We don't get to do that, because we don't have the money. We haven't had the money. The only reason Oak Grove has bunker gear for the majority of the people that's within the service date of ten years is from a grant we got several years ago. Oak Grove has brought over $500,000 in grants from state and federal funding and other sources in the last four years. We got two new apparatus, that's the only reason we have two apparatus, new apparatus. They were needed drastically. But now we get to this year, like I say, last year, we were starting to spend a little money trying to get the protective equipment and some other equipment, do maintenance on our apparatus. We've got these two new vehicles, and we're not even able to, haven't been in the past, maintain the other vehicles, and now we've got new ones that we, we don't want to deteriorate. So, we've got to have money to be able to do the routine maintenance and servicing and testing on them. If the budget gets, continues to get reduced and not increased, we're not going to be able to do that. So, I just ask that if y'all tonight, look back and see if you cannot move that to at least the funding for the volunteer fire departments to what it was last year, if not, give us, give the volunteer fire departments some increase. Because if we don't, we're going to continue to be underfunded and continue to back up. We can't... We can't take two steps forward and three steps backwards. So I just ask that y'all reconsider that funding and at a minimum, bring it up to the minimum funding last year or hopefully some increase. And I know Mr. Williams, he presented some figures of what was needed to do that. Thank you for your time.
Stephen King.
All right, good evening. My name is Stephen King. I'm at 123 Winland Circle in Goodlettsville, Tennessee. I'm also a member of the Sumner County School Board. And I want to share a few things, some information about the school budget, and also talk about the playgrounds tonight. Since 2022, newly recurring revenue for the schools has increased by 70 million. If the budget passes tonight, an additional 11.5 million of state and local funding will go, will add to that. And that means that there will be 81 million of newly recurring revenue going into the 2025, 2026 school year. And that's money we didn't have several years ago. So my question is, what impact on student academic outcomes has that funding accomplished? Well, since the 2021-22 school year, reading scores have increased by only 1.8%, and reading proficiency is still below 50%. So after all that new funding, half of our students are still not reading at grade level. To me, this is our biggest crisis. And I'm concerned about this budget because this budget, this school budget, cuts positions that directly engages with students at the school level while adding new positions to the central office that, in my opinion, will not move the academic needle. The further away from the classroom, the less impact one has on student outcomes. And that's not to say that some positions are not important, but they do not all carry equal impact on students. And this budget cuts positions that I believe are desperately needed and so do many others feel the same way. Allow me to address the school reserves for a moment. I shared in February that our reserves had increased to 143 million as of June 30th of last year, and that included a surplus of 17 million in unspent revenue from the 23-24 school year. Why then did the schools need 5.4 million in capital from the county last year? The answer is, they didn't. And we actually received a report this past March at the school board that showed that we actually had 27 million available of undesignedated reserves. So why did we need, why did the schools need 5.4 million last year? They didn't. That was simply a political shakedown. What is the reserve amount today? Well, we don't, we don't know. Board member Andy Lacy asked the question this year, and the director of schools and the chief financial officer said, "We don't know." And they said, "Even if we could give you that number, it would include funds that are restricted that we cannot budget." So there's no point in really saying. Now, I don't know about you, but I believe the people deserve to know how much is in our reserve funds. And I believe you guys know, deserve to know how much is there. But here's the thing, they know what that amount is. Otherwise, they would not have budgeted 85 million of reserve funds in this school budget. So this school budget has 85 million of reserves funded. So looking ahead, I hope that next year's budget is more transparent. That's my hope. But tonight, I have a request. And we have a chance to do something positive, something that has unanimous school board support and strong community backing. And that is what many have mentioned tonight, an initiative to invest in school playgrounds to make them accessible and usable for students with special needs. And we need to do this for three reasons. I'll be quick. First, legal compliance. The Rehabilitation Act requires that schools provide accommodations making them accessible and usable. Second, inclusion and developmental needs. Someone mentioned that new state law. We have new state requirements for recess time. The state legislature increased it from 15 minutes to 40 minutes a day. Now, 40 minutes is a long time for a child to be excluded. Also, many believe that recess supports cognitive growth, social development, and academic focus. Leaving some students out potentially denies them of those benefits. And finally, third, is to balance priority. We've spent close to 30 million on athletic facility upgrades with plans to spend even more. Don't you think it's time to invest in some other students' needs? I do. This isn't about fairness regarding booster debt reimbursement. Westmoreland was a special case where citizens had to intervene to fix a building that the school board refused to fix, and it was a safety hazard that they had to fix. So in closing, I respectfully ask the county commission to reallocate 500,000 out of school club's debt payoff and reallocate that towards this initiative to invest in these exceptional students, students who deserve to play, belong, and thrive. Thank you.
Lisa Brokka.
Thank you for having me. My name is Lisa Brokka. I lived at 296 Lake Terrace Drive for 30 years. My kids are grown. I'm actually disabled. You might not know it. I've been in a wheelchair, a walker, eight major broken bones. And I would challenge every one of you to get a wheelchair for one day and go around, go to the grocery store and see how difficult that is. The fact that we cannot, that this is, that we're even talking about this for these children, I believe are the most special gifts from God. To me, there's no excuse that we cannot come up with the money and do this for all 31 schools. I am willing to volunteer to get a group together. We know it would take a group, but a group that wants a move toward getting things done, not excuses. So these kids, your son, can be inclusive in the playground. I learned that's different than just handicapped accessible. It's that you actually can use the items. And Mary's Magical, I was there with two inner-city black children last night, and they said, "You guys are so lucky you have this. We don't have anything like this." And I told them about Mary, read the story. I donated 3,000 to it, I was asked. And I believe this should be a grassroots community thing. And I believe that most people love children and will give something toward it. And we could even make a competitive thing with the schools, who does this and that sort of thing. They get ice cream sundaes, whatever. And also, talk to the mayor. Who's getting jobs and money that our tax dollars are paying? Cough some money up, donate toward this. I see, from a four-year sales background, I see everything very orderly. I see this as so doable, and this community prides itself on being a faith-based community. And so now we need to show it to the children. They don't get to vote. And so they keep getting pushed to the wayside, whether it's national or local. I'm a child advocate, was a pediatric nurse. And like I said, I'm volunteering to be with you, Mom. And I don't want any kid to not have the access to play. We don't have to do a Mary's Magical. It's part of it. And I learned this, I talked to Mary's mom last night, Rachel, and she educated me. And she said, "Just a part of the playground so that our kid can go and be part of the whole group." And to think about, you're in a wheelchair your whole life, and you've got to sit there and look, think about the resources. An assistant from the school has to be with that child. Physical education is not an opportunity for them. It's so sad. And so I can't make a motion like you all do. But I would ask you all as a group to make a motion to let's just get this thing done and get it moving instead of talking about it for 10 more years. Because this community is good, and I know the money will come. And it'll probably be about 5 or 6 million. Mr. King will probably correct me. And I think we can do it. We will all be proud of ourselves. And what we say we are, we will show we are that. Thank you so much.
Curtis Williams.
Hello, I am Curtis Williams, 1027 Jackson Heights. I'm sure a lot of you recognize me. The ones that don't, hi, for the first time. I am here, of course, asking for money for the volunteer fire departments. We've been doing this for a long time now. It started 2012. We wanted a C task report. It took us 10 years to get the C task report. Y'all said back in 2018 that you would give us some extra funding until the C task report was finalized. Y'all did do that. I do appreciate it. It went up from 230,000 to 480,000. Then in 2019, we had another row. Y'all added some capital expenditure money. Thank you very much for that. Unfortunately, in the last year, he said that we weren't going to be able to do or that y'all weren't going to be able to do any more capital expenditures, that it was a liability issue. So now we're back down to just a nonprofit donation. The nonprofit donations are great. They are legal. It avoids us having to do a fire tax. It avoids the liability for the county, which I know a lot of the commissioners have been wanting to make sure it was out of it. But really, the difference between what we're doing now is we're asking the county to be proactive instead of reactive. If you're proactive, you're going to make sure that these departments don't fail. You're going to make sure that they're still in existence for the next five, 10, 20 years in order to avoid the fire tax, a county-wide fire department that's going to cost you millions and millions of dollars. Right now, there's only seven counties in the entire state that do even do a variation of the fire tax. The closest ones to us seems to be Bradley County. They have about 14 stations. They have about 68,000 citizens. Their fire tax equates to over $5.5 million a year. So if we're talking about not doing the nonprofit donation in order to do the fire tax for the conservatives in the county, that's actually going to cost you a lot more money, about five times as much as what they're asking for now. If one of these fire departments right now currently fails, once again, the liability issue. There's something called a Fire Department Recognition Act. In that Recognition Act, it says, "Any department created after 2003 has to have the board and legislature of that area vote on the zone, and at that point, you will take on liability." So if one of these fire departments fails, in order for there to be a new fire department, you as a legislature have to vote on it, which means you will be declaring whose zone is what for the entire county, and then you will have some type of liability because you've decided who has what zone. So once again, we're just walking a tightrope at this point. The money that's coming in is enough to keep these guys afloat for maybe another year, maybe another six months. We really don't know. But if at some point one of these fire departments fail, the dominoes hit, and everything in the county has to go back to where you're having to vote on everything. So, once again, I just ask. I know that the funding is a lot more than it was in years past. But when you're talking per capita in the state of Tennessee, the average in 2013, according to C task, was $45 per citizen in the unincorporated areas. Sumner County, right now, in 2025, is at $3.25. It's not even close. I'm not saying to make it a multimillion-dollar fire department, but can we just get a little bit closer to something that's doable in the long term? We're just not there yet. I know a lot of commissioners, again, have said it's a low probability but a high-impact issue. We don't have a lot of citizens come up here and speak because the chances of someone being in a car accident, the chances of a heart attack, once again, are low. But for the people that have had to be saved by these volunteer firefighters, I guarantee you, they were glad they were there, and they were not complaining about the $5 in taxes they spent to make sure that they responded. Thank you.
Charlena Allmiller.
Hi, I'm Charlena Allmiller, and I live at 143 Rule 1 Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. This meeting started at 7 o'clock. The agenda was passed at approximately 7:58. It is 9:22, and we're still in public comments. There are between 6,000 and 7,000 employees in this county that are pending on this budget passing. If you're going to change your rules on anything, I would highly recommend that you make sure that every year that the budget is on the agenda, there is nothing else on the agenda. I support the increases in the budget to pay for playgrounds for all students, not just special needs. I am an avid PTO supporter, and I pay for my kids' playgrounds. And so I would love for this commission to pay for that, for everybody. That'd be great. I would also support 90,000 for each volunteer fire department. That would be fantastic. I drive through the county all the time. I have a great fire department in Hendersonville, but I don't live only, I mean, I don't stay just in Hendersonville. I would like to be protected everywhere. I'm against to hold back for payroll because I don't think it's necessary. And when that does come up on the agenda, I will speak to that more. There are lots of things that I would like to say that were removed from the agenda, which I'll get to if I get a chance. The trash removal for the Cotton Town, since it is back on the agenda or stays on the agenda, that property is contentious because that property was going to be cleaned up from a grant. It was removed from the grant because citizens said that they would take care of that property, and they wanted to keep it, and they wanted to cultivate it themselves. Those citizens are not here. Every month, this comes back up in a different way, or every few months, it comes back up in a different way. I wish that we would just get the T-DOT grant and just create this grass park. That's all it would be. We can put some all-inclusive equipment on there. It would be great. There's a dilapidated house there. It would be nice to get that removed. But I don't want us to pay for it since we could have had a grant pay for it. For 250713, the lease, I would like you to pass that. TCAT is in Portland, and I have never heard anybody argue about how Hendersonville students can get to TCAT. But every time something comes up, this by Gallatin or Hendersonville, it is always coming back to the northern part of the county. Students and parents are very resourceful when they need to be. You can carpool. We'll figure it out whenever it happens. Those are the details that do need to be fleshed out after the ball is actually rolling. But the ball can't get rolling unless you have a building. And nobody wants to build a building. This building is available at a very low cost. I do understand that there will be maintenance and operations, but if we want good things for our students, we have to figure out how to do them. Nobody wants to go into debt to pass a bond, to build a building. But everybody agrees this is a good idea. This is a great deal. Let's make it work. I'm only mentioning this because so many people said that everybody has four-term limits. I am not. It takes away my vote because you take away who I can choose to elect. I would like my commissioner to run for a fourth term. I think that he is fantastic. If he decides not to run, I will be disappointed. But I know that informing voters is hard work, but it will eventually accomplish, it will accomplish better government than just eliminating the experienced commissioners. I also don't think that the state constitution allows 16 people just to make a recommendation for this to happen. I do think that it should go to the voters. And a city voting whether their mayor should be term-limited is very different than assuming that the entire county would want to limit the voter, limit the terms of part-time commissioners because a mayor's terms cannot be limited. So I'm going to leave with just a little less than a minute left, but I do hope that you'll pass the budget. There are many, many people counting on you. And let's just get this done. Thank you.
Kevin Begert.
Kevin Begert, 424 AB Wade Road. I just looked at my watch, and I was thinking, 35 years ago this evening at this time, me and my new bride were heading off on our honeymoon. And 12 years ago, we came to our first county commission meeting and have been here every month since. You know, some of the stuff that I hear us talk about, John Sevier, well, first of all, Thomas Jefferson would have a whole different opinion if he were sitting here today talking about our constitution, about how we implement it. And John Sevier, some people say the father of Tennessee, he would be shaking his head too. But a bunch of things to talk about. First of all, the term limits. It's a good thing there's no term limits on citizens. I would have been thrown out, what, four, eight years ago? But don't worry, that ain't going to happen. And hopefully, we're going to have more citizens coming every month to redress their grievances and talk about the things, you know? There's a lot on the budget tonight, on the agenda tonight. So I'm not going to get into too many of the things. But public comments.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing them tonight. I appreciate it. I thought maybe tonight would be my first time in 12 years getting thrown out, but that won't have to happen.
Oh, we won't do that.
It's early yet, right? Regarding the playgrounds, I was going to talk about the building lease, and whether it's a good idea or not, I don't really know, I think it is, but in the Budget Committee meeting, I brought up the idea that this whole concept of separate but equal was litigated back in the 1800s, right? The whole Brown versus Board of Education, and maybe in the future, we're going to have some, you could pencil in somebody else's name against Board of Education, it'll be 2025 or 2026, that we're not addressing these needs. You know, we talk about wants versus needs. We spent $20 million or so on stadiums, and our disadvantaged children can't even use playgrounds? That's just wrong. We've got plenty of money sitting there in the school reserves. This should have been addressed, but this is another one of those things where separate but equal doesn't cut it. For 10 years almost now, I've been watching the northern part of this county being treated as second-class citizens, and that's what's going to happen with this multi-year lease. You think that the kids up in Westmoreland and Portland are going to get bused down to this innovation center in Hendersonville? Anybody want to place bets? Yeah, yeah, we'll believe that. And regarding that whole thing, you know, it may be a great idea, but has anybody here seen a business plan, how it's going to work? I mean, the Director of Schools talked about doing that at the last Republican Breakfast, he was going to present, make a presentation, so y'all knew what you were spending the money for. Instead, it just goes into another black hole. And the volunteer fire departments, they'll be left out. The kids in wheelchairs, they'll be left out. Beach High School probably get a new stadium, maybe a dome over it, I don't know. Got to keep up with Liberty Creek, but I went way off course, but Chairman, I may be going on my second honeymoon now, so.
And last, Joanna Daniels. Joanna Daniels. Joanna Daniels. We're going to take 10 minutes.
You may need to get David to clarify this.
Yo, have one.
The Board of Education vote, that's an up-down, they're pissing it apart.
Yeah, they think, line item. All right, we are now on Report of the Chair. Veterans Service Report is in your documents, the docking of financial statements also, and now we have election of committee on committees, and we will open the floor for that at this time. Mr. Brown?
Yes, I would like to nominate...
No, above all committees.
I would like to nominate David Klein, Mary Janong, Terry Wright, Danny Sullivan, and Deborah Holmes.
All right. Is that as a slate? Okay. Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Commissioners Sullivan, Bergdorf, Lambeth, Miller, and Holmes.
Seeing no one else in the queue, we will, was that as a, Commissioner Harrison, was that as a slate?
Yes.
Okay. So that will make it simpler in that the first ones nominated will be Green, that will be Klein, Janong, Wright, Sullivan, and Holmes. And the second nominated will be red, and that will be Sullivan, Bergdorf, Lambeth, Miller, and Holmes. If the, Commissioner Mansfield?
I'd like to request, we just vote on these one at a time, Mr. Chairman? So, that's my, that's my motion.
Well, the two, two people who made the motion said that they were as a slate. They made the motion as a slate. Are you appealing to the body to do that differently?
I guess I'm making an amendment to sever individually.
To elect individually? All right, that could be a long process, but that's okay. We'll put that on the board then, to see if we will sever or as a slate. A no will be as a slate, a yes will be to sever, if you will, Clerk.
To be clear, to vote Green, I'm voting for the slate or against the slate?
You're voting for the motion to sever, yes. And a no, it would stay as slates. Okay.
Each Commissioner, record your vote.
With a vote of 14 to 10, it will be as slates. Yeah, the first slate is Klein, Janong, Wright, Sullivan, and Holmes. The second slate is Sullivan, Bergdorf, Lambeth, Miller, and Holmes. The first one will be Green, the second one will be red. All right, you can post that, Madam Clerk. Yes.
Never mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Each Commissioner, record your vote.
Receiving 15 votes, the slate of Sullivan, Bergdorf, Lambeth, Miller, and Holmes are elected as our Committee on as our committee on committee for next year. And we'll probably have another time of a break here in a little while, and we'll let them get together and elect a chairperson. And then finally, what is not on here, that I meant to put on here is the fact to remind you that next month, we have election of a chairman. Now, I'm not sure who that will be, but I'm absolutely positive who it will not be. Okay? And so be thinking about that and preparing to make a good decision in regard to that. All right, report of county officials, that is on your, in your documents. And the notaries, we will have elected at this time, I'll ask the clerk to post those.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, receives a unanimous vote. All right, we now have reports of standing committees, and we moved budget up to head all of the committee reports, so Mr. Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty-five oh seven.
Let me, let me begin by saying, pardon me for interrupting you, but I've heard some scattering of discussion, and so has the attorney. But I want to remind you that we cannot, we can not line item the school budget. That is not our prerogative. It is not possible, and the attorney is in agreement with that. All we can do is vote it up or vote it down. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First one, mercifully should be a little simpler than that, twenty-five oh seven dash zero nine is to fix the tax levy in Sumner County for fiscal year beginning July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. This tax levy is the revenue neutral rate, I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk, would you post that, please?
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Receiving twenty-four votes, that is unanimous. Go ahead.
Item number twenty-five oh seven dash ten, to make appropriations and approve corresponding budgets for the various funds for the Department, Institutions, Offices, and Agencies of Sumner County, Tennessee, to include the Sumner County Schools for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six, I so move.
Thanks.
Motion and a second, Commissioner Brown.
Since the budgets were not severed, I could not vote for the BoE budget for the following reasons. Hundred and forty-three million dollars in taxpayer money in their reserves, as reported according to the Tennessee State Comptroller's report, causes the director and its CFO are not forthcoming and transparent with this information, even to the county finance director and its own members of the Board of Education. This money belongs to the taxpayers of this county and not the director and the CFO to squirrel away for whatever pet projects the director may have. Also, don't tell me that it is earmarked for special projects, or that the Board of Education has to have two months of operating expenses. The last five years, ninety million dollars alone has been put into this reserve. This past year, seventeen million dollars was put into the reserves. That money could have gone to fund the state mandatory pay raises for teachers, which is going to come due next year, or for the Americans for Disability Act, for these children to have lawfully compliant playgrounds. However, the director is going to put that off until then. Is the director going to sequester this six million dollar increase this year that the budget chairman decided to put in, and then put twenty-three million dollars in the Board of Education reserves? There was a thirty-one million dollar amount put into the reserves in twenty twenty-two. Year and a half ago, in May of twenty twenty-four, the director came to ask the county for five-point four million dollars extra for the county and the bleacher gate, a plan that went sideways and took three times as long as the director had promised, when the Board of Education had the money in their reserve. This request came after having not much of a plan to repair or replace the bleachers at Beach Hendersonville in Portland in a timely manner, two years ago in October of twenty twenty-three. This bleacher project at multiple high schools doesn't look like it's going to be ready for prime time, again, for the twenty twenty-five football season either. A six million dollar increase to the MOE, why are we increasing the MOE when the Board of Education put seventeen million dollars into the reserve last year? We are doing the taxpayers of this county a disservice when we make fiscally irresponsible decisions as this one. School population of students has been stagnant for the past ten years. While this county is growing in leaps and bounds in population, otherwise, the school population isn't. Parents are opting to homeschool or send their children to private schools, and this is why we are seeing the school population flatline. The curriculum is not producing as it should across the board with subpar TCAP test scores and fifty percent of all students not being able to read at grade level. A questionable curriculum supporting DEI woke objectives, which is supposed to be against state and federal law. Lastly, the director is wanting to increase the footprint of the Board of Education with the addition of the Smith Travel Research Building. Why do we need more space when the population is not growing? Building lease is a small portion of the equation. The heavy lifting is going to be personnel and benefits, security, education, support, maintenance, reconfiguration, and possible updating to accommodate educational purposes. The building, the original building was built in nineteen eighty-five, with others built over a fifteen-year timeframe. Utilities and transportation costs, if North Sumner is going to be included in this opportunity. An increase of fifteen highly-paid administrative positions at the board while eliminating teacher positions in the classroom. Admin positions do very little to educate our children. The director is consolidating power at the board by the creation of these positions, who will be beholden to him and support his agenda. We need more teachers who can directly impact the students' learning and success, not more ivory tower greatly removed individuals from the classroom. I miss the days of the former director, who showed me a little respect while he was lying to me. Now I'm publicly being called a Nazi on Facebook for my thirty years of service from the Cold War, Operation Desert Storm, the Global War on Terror, with its two campaigns of Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom in the U.S. Army, by the director, who never spent a day in active military units. This commission has been duped by the director too many times. And it is time to hold him accountable for the taxpayers' money to whom he is responsible. I'll be voting no on this resolution.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, I actually have two amendments that affects two different departments in the budget. My first amendment is going to be to add the step increases for emergency services and for the sheriff's office. That would be one amendment to the budget.
Would you restate that, please?
Sure. I'd like to add the step increases for our EMS service, and then also add these step increases for our sheriff's department to the budget.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get in the queue on that.
Okay, there is a motion and a second, go ahead.
One. I may have an amendment to it. I just want to know what the total amount is that you're, that you're requesting.
Can you answer that?
I can. For health, for emergency services, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty. For the sheriff's office, it's two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine.
Okay, and I apologize, so we're talking about five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars roughly.
Close to that, yes, that's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe, and I would like to verify this with our finance director, and I am going to have an amendment to this, but I want to get the numbers right, it's kind of hard to do this ad hoc. Mr. Lo, if I could direct, can I add direct a question, Mr. Law?
You may.
Mr. Law, how much did we set aside? I believe it was five hundred thousand.
Probably it's five hundred, but I'll verify.
So, okay, while he's verifying that, what I would like to do is reduce this, I'd like to make this, to amend this to be one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand for the EMS and two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. I want to make sure I've got the math here, trying to do this quick. Two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand for the sheriff's department, and I'm going to explain my reasoning here. Four-forty, okay, so that, actually, what's, I need to do, sorry, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand for the sheriff's department, excuse me, four-hundred, so four-thirty, that gives me seventy thousand. So the reason I'm, I'm doing this is I want to explain how we got to where we got. That's, that's going to be my motion, would anybody like to, if anybody wants to second it? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I want to explain, explain my rationale here. The, the sheriff's department and the EMS have appropriately built out schedules for their step increases. I understand, I understand the rationale, there's, you know, there's an article that came out in the newspaper, Sheriff Cradigan and I have had several conversations, we understand each other's sides here. And the sheriff's department and the EMS department are just in, just doing what they've done every year, they've already got their, their schedule of step increases laid out. So I understand their ask, and I'm, I'm fine with supporting it. What the Budget Committee attempted to do was, we've recognized that the, that the county, writ large, does not have a step increase policy, and this has been a problem that, that the counties had well before this commission, and we're, we're trying to remedy it. And so what the Budget Committee did is I appointed a subcommittee to come up with, with such a policy, and then we set aside five hundred thousand dollars to divvy up between all the departments once that policy was in place. So the idea was that it would be equitable for everyone. Again, I understand that the sheriff and EMS department, you know, they're like, hey, we're just doing what we've done before. So the reason I reduced this was to, to put, so that we have about, we keep about seventy thousand dollars for the other departments to institute step raises. They're much, the other departments are much smaller, so I think this is, I'm, I'm taking a shot in the dark here, I recognize this is not a perfect policy, this is why we wanted to, to wait, but given that I think this is probably going to pass, and I understood, this amendment's likely to pass, and I understand the position of the sheriff's department and EMS, I, I want it, you know, let's get it done, but just take a little bit off the top there so that we have some left over for the rest of the county. That's, that's my motion.
All right, you've heard the motion, it is a second to, we have people in the queue, and if I ask you, it's, it's speaking particularly on this motion. Commissioner Mansfield? Pardon?
Was there a second to this?
Yes. Commissioner Harris?
Main motion.
Commissioner Teichner?
Just, just one point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just make a motion, I make an amendment that we just defer that back to, to the Budget Committee, so they can sort out the details, just so there's nothing missed.
Second.
Motion and a second to refer back. I don't believe there's any discussion.
That's the third amendment now on the floor?
No, that's a second. Is that, no discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that is the third amendment, sir. If I, if I was the main?
Commissioner Rogers, and then I, I made an amendment, which would be the second.
That's what I said, it's a second. You can have two.
Yeah, yours, yours, yours would be the third.
We're good right now, Mr. Winslet.
Yeah, all right. We are ready to vote on this to refer it back, if you will, Madam.
One more, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
Is this amendment? It's one, this is amendment, that's two, the amendment to refer would be the third, you can't vote.
If I was the third amendment, he's correct. If that's correct.
Just withdraw it.
Yeah, I'll withdraw, withdraw.
You can do it after.
All right. Okay. So then we're voting on this one, and no one had said they wanted to speak to it, it was the main motion, so if you'll post that.
Amendment at the start.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, that passes twenty-two to one, then we go to, what was the second one?
The, the, the original amendment.
The main motion.
No, the, the first, we have to go back to the amendment, which was Mr. Rogers, sir, and that was to, to simply install these, to install these step raises, so reinstalling as amended.
All right. Commissioner Teichner, is this on?
Mr. Chairman, I just make, I defer to go back to budget for this now, because I couldn't a second ago out of procedure, but I just make a motion, we defer.
All right, motion and a second to refer it back.
Defer.
Uh, defer, okay. That we defer it, and seeing no one else in the queue, we'll put that on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
And that is a fifteen to eight, as a no, so it will not be deferred. We're back on the main motion. Commissioner Mansfield?
Do we need to take a vote on Commissioner Rogers's amendment as amended, or, I mean?
Commissioner Rogers, all right.
His amendment as amended, meaning that to implement the steps at that new rate.
All right.
That's technically what's on the floor.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, then we'll post that at this time.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
I believe Mr. Mansfield is next, but I would like to get in queue, I have one additional amendment I need to just clean up.
All right.
You were before me.
As mentioned tonight during public comments, and we've received a lot of emails, that the current proposed county budget on page eighty-one does include a line item called school club debt payoff from the hospital fund, which is intended to pay off athletic booster club debt, which was spoken earlier, mainly for, you know, luxury items like AstroTurf and Jumbotron's, for the most part. I will say that while Westmoreland High School did receive a debt reimbursement from the commission, that was a unique situation where the citizens were forced to intervene when the school board declined to act in twenty twenty-one to repair a facility that they currently owned. That literally had raw sewage and water backing up into it, pervasive mold and mildew issues leading to crumbling walls from the exorbitant amount of bleacher using a kill it, and the ceiling and insulation were falling in due to leaks and damage from the roof. So, again, as mentioned, athletic spending is now approached thirty million. I'm going to move to amend our budget to reallocate that line item of five hundred thousand dollars towards renovating school playgrounds for handicap accessibility, inclusivity, wheelchairs, as well as allocate the remaining two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. uh, as well as allocate the remaining two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred nine dollars from the Hospital Fund that's in our budget to, uh, deplete those funds entirely, and all those funds that are in there to go towards, uh, these playgrounds, uh, and that is my motion, Mr. Chairman, on that amendment.
Okay.
That, that'll bring, with the school board's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's approximately eight hundred thousand dollars from the County Commission's Hospital Fund, that I'm, five hundred thousand, move it away from School Booster Club debt towards these playgrounds, and then to take the remaining two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred two dollars out of the Hospital Fund, apply that, so, I had almost eight hundred thousand dollars there. Uh, and then with the school board committing only two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that still brings it up to one point zero five million dollars that could go this next year towards these playgrounds, uh, and at least give five or six schools and provide a tangible, um, experience indifference for kids who've been excluded from this process. So, that's my motion is to transfer that money for, for that purpose.
All right, and the attorney seems to think that this being county general money, that it would be permissible, um.
Yeah, this is the county, county budget that we're saying we're gonna contribute towards these playgrounds on behalf of the schools, so it's no different than back in the day when you guys used to take capital money and use it for school buses. So, but my motion is to take the five hundred thousand dollars that's currently, currently being allocated towards School Booster Club, Club debt, and to reallocate that towards these playgrounds, in addition to two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred two dollars that would be left in the Hospital Funds, and add that to it.
Okay, I, hopefully, we understand what is being said here, and we're not, this is not a situation where we're necessarily trying to line item the school budget, because we cannot do that. I've been, been there, done that, you can't do it, but, uh, this is a little different situation here. Does everyone understand, or would you like further clarification, Chairman?
I'd like to get in queue on this.
All right, go ahead.
He, I, I don't know if Mr. Rogers was in queue for this one. So, um, Mr. Chairman, just wanna be, and it's related to this idea of line iteming. On the, we just heard an argument that the schools have X amount of money in reserves, and that, that at least one school board member is making an argument that, you know, we can't compel the director to spend that, those funds in certain ways. Because we can't line item this, I can't help but to think that if we were to write a check for five hundred thousand or seven hundred thirteen thousand, just a point of clarification, if we were to do this, is there any way we could, that we can force the, the school, the BOE to actually do that with-
You can't force the Board of Education.
I'll, I'll clarify my amendment.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll restate it in, um, that, first, my intent here, uh, sorry for lack of clarity, if, any, was to earmark it, because right now it's just earmark, it's not spent, it's gotta come back before the Commission if it ever gets allocated or budgeted out. So, my intent is to earmark this and switch the line item to be designated towards that in our budget. And I'll, I'll further restate that before that happens, that the county would have to enter into an MOU agreement or some type of agreement with the schools, that this is restricted only for this purpose, and the county would be responsible for paying that, uh, into it, and not just hand it over carte blanche to the schools unless they're willing to use it for this purpose. Otherwise, I would not want to give this money, uh, but the citizens have asked for this. Uh, my school board member came to the Budget Committee last month and asked for this, he, citizens have come up, he came up and asked for this. He mentioned that in a school board meeting about doing this as well. Uh, this is not a hidden agenda item, this is no big secret, we've received, uh, over three dozen emails about this issue alone over the past several days. Uh, so, that's my amendment, is to reallocate the designation for these funds in our budget, because it currently says School Booster Club Debt, to reallocate that towards, um, inclusive ADA compliant playgrounds for children. Whatever we need to name that, whatever the correct term is for that, for that five hundred thousand, and I'm also adding two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred two dollars to give us seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred two dollars in total from our Hospital Fund designated towards these playgrounds, reserved for that in our budget. Now, it's gotta come back before the Commission, through the appropriation process, through the Budget Committee, all over again, in order to distribute those funds, just like we do for everything else. But this is just reallocating it in our budget and saying it's for this. And we're definitely with the caveat that the schools would have to agree to only spend it for this purpose and no other purpose, otherwise they can't get the money. So, I, that, I think that's getting a little ahead of the skis on this one, uh, I think that would be a second, uh, a follow-up, but I'm wel-, I'm willing to add that, um.
We may be, we may be safe on this, but I'll, I will say, Commissioner Mansfield, that I, I feel like we're getting close to some shaky ground when we start asking the school board or, or to, to not spend their money except in a particular way. Uh, I know when I was Director of Schools, just to make this explanation, that, um, all, all that the Commission could do is say, we're reducing your budget five hundred thousand dollars. Now, if we wanted to go and take that five hundred thousand dollars out of maintenance, out of whatever else, we still could do what we want it to do.
Sure, but last year, the, the school board passed a resolution agreeing to five point four million dollars to be used only for athletic facility usage, and the County Commission, uh, entered it in, into that as well. Uh, that was just last year, so it's, it, the precedent was established last year, so I'm following that new precedent.
And the key to that is, they were in agreement.
Well, if they're not in agreement, we don't give them the money, I mean, it's that simple.
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually still in the queue, I've got an amendment that might help.
All right, go ahead.
And I'll, 'cause I, I was just talking to Mr. Law in here, and just to avoid, here's what I would suggest, and I'll make this amendment, that we, uh, make a request of the schools, 'cause we, the, you know, the comments that I've heard are that this is just a drop in the bucket and we'll just get started. And I know that we've had comments on other things that we, we don't have a plan for certain facilities, we don't have a plan for this one at all. I would, I would, um, the amendment I have here is this. To request of the schools for an estimate of what the total cost to fix all, to make all the playgrounds ADA compliant, one, to confirm that they don't have that funding, to in, confirm in writing that they don't have that funding in their existing, uh, in their existing budget, and to submit that, uh, request to the, uh, Budget Committee, or to the Commission for, for, uh, review. And so, that's, so that's the request, and then we can look at it and see what we've got, and maybe we've got it in capital.
All right, a motion and a second to-
Maybe we got a bond.
All right. Any discussion, anyone in the queue that would like to speak to that? Would you please let me know, all right, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I, I think that this is one of those things that we do, it doesn't matter what side you're on, uh, politically, you do this at this hour, at this time, it's not done properly. My, my amendment, if I was making one, but I'm not, we already have one, but here's what I would say to the amendment that we have. One, I don't think we should pay off the School Booster Club Debt, that's from a president of two current booster clubs. I don't think it matters if they have debt or not, I don't know what mechanism, they still took funds from their citizens. I think any school support organization, from playgrounds to booster clubs or sports, if they can show that they've raised money and bought property that's now on the school board's assets, after what we did with the Westmoreland Building, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, then everybody could come up here and get up to two hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. Whether somebody wrote a check, or they went, I mean, financing, that's a weird thing to me, I don't understand, like, doesn't matter. We, like, a five oh one C three donated money, how they got that mechanism doesn't matter. So, I don't think we should pay that off, 'cause that's just a slippery slope paying off people's debt, we shouldn't have done it for Westmoreland, I said that here. But I do believe in these playgrounds, and I think five hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's a, that's not gonna do nothing, we're gonna be in the same situation. There's gonna be somebody that comes up here and stands and says, this school got it, and this school didn't get it, because these people in this, live in this area, or flip-flop, this is the rich part of town, or four months ago, when we did what we did for Westmoreland, well, this is the not as wealthy part of town. People just flip that coin whichever way they wanna flip. I just think it's embarrassing when I think that between our partnership, we're one county. I understand legally with the school board and the way the budget works, I understand that. I've been the chairman of the committee, uh, for multiple years, Mr. Shuff's doing a fine job. But we are one Sumner County. We have handicapped children who do not have access to play. It's a travesty. We waste money, I mean, we, we waste, I mean, the amount of money sometimes we waste just in meetings with salaries that sit there all day long, it's just, it's, it's my, so I would move to just take this money out, this part of it out, and I would say, which is what the chairman just said, but I would say, get us estimates to get playground accessible at every single playground in this county, and this body will match up to five million dollars. I'll throw it, whatever, I don't know the number, 'cause we didn't do it in committee, nobody put a plan together, we hadn't seen the estimates. But whatever that is, once we verify them, hey, we're eight million dollars away, then we'll pay for it. The school board, you pay for, and let's just do this, because picking in, like, we're gonna do this, I get so tired of this school 'cause it's off of Indian Lake Road, or this school off of Liberty, or this school off of, what in the world does that mean? Do we wanna take care of the handicapped children, or do, do we not? We have the money, and we, we wanna bash the school board for having reserves? I can ask the question formally to our Finance Director, I promise you, the County General side has reserves too, in the hundreds of millions of dollars, probably. We got money sitting around.
Not that kind of money.
I, I'll tell you this, if we ask for receipts from all our banks setting up, you, you people would be shocked how much money we fight over not spending. Let me just say it that way, to have the lowest tax rate of the Donut Counties, we've got money. And it's just funny when we all argue, that we, we, we sit up here and we argue, we have no money, we have no money, we have no money, we have no money. We gotta be cheap, we gotta be cheap, we gotta be cheap, and then, hey, we gotta take care of the handicapped people, and we've all agreed on it tonight. So, let's figure out a way to do it. So, I say, let's pick a number, I'll say, up, don't do a number, up to whatever the estimates come back at, veto, take this out of our budget, let's move on with business, whatever motion we have to do, and tell the school director to bring back in estimates for every school of the playground to be ADA compliant, and we'll pay half. I don't know how to legally do that, but, um, everybody's nodding their head, if you wanna do it, let's do it. I sat up on this same body eight years ago, looking at some same people, and everybody's sitting here and talking about wanting to have SRO officers, everybody. And I was the only guy, when I was sitting in Mr. Shuff's seat, said, wait a minute, this is about to pass twenty-four to nothing, and a month from now, when the budget comes up, I guarantee you it's not gonna pass twenty-four. How are we gonna tell every other, because there was a school shooting that we didn't want? And it was, the news was here, and it was a big deal, so, everybody was gonna vote yes. And so, well, wait a minute, we're about to vote for the budget in thirty-five days. Who's gonna be voting yes then, 'cause how are we gonna pay for these school resource officers? But everybody's nodding their head yes, so, how do I do that? What would my amendment be? My amendment would be, strike the money for the, for the, um, payback of debts, tell the school director to go get a, a bid on every single playground, and let's set a, whatever that comes in, we can set a dollar and we'll pay half of it. I don't know how to do that, but, Mr. Sittler, you tell me how to get that done.
Well, that is a, uh, that is an amendment.
No, he can't make an amendment, we've already got two.
Do we have to?
Yes, sir. And just, just to be clear-
But I, I think that, I think that the Commissioner here is coming close to what you're saying, except he is adding right now a figure to it.
I, I, I don't wanna add, but just to be super clear here, I, and this is, and I didn't make it clear, but this came after speaking with Mr. Law. I, I want to, the simplest thing to do is to just strike the appropriation from the Hospital Fund. Let's just, let's just strike it entirely, from booster clubs, from, we can, we can deal with that later. And not that booster clubs are important, and, and not that the ADA, uh, 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 playgrounds are not important. I'm, I'm arguing here to potentially give more, I don't know, I don't wanna put a dollar figure on it because we don't know.
That did not be considered a-
So, so, I just wanna-
Second agree?
Does my, well, so, it's, and, but I'm still making a request to the school board to get, get a figure back.
Okay, all right, uh, you know what, anyone in the queue that wants to speak to this, Commissioner Becker?
So, if I understand what the, what the current amendment is here, is we just remove the five hundred thousand dollar, um, line item out of, out of our budget, and out of the nonprofit budget that we're about to vote on next. Keep that, so that, that gets scratched out, and then we have some time to hear back from the director of schools there. That's perfect, I, I completely agree with that, so thank you, I just wanna make sure I was clear, thanks.
All right, uh, so we have the motion and the second, uh, to just strike the entire amount altogether until we get some, something back. Uh, are you speaking on this particularly? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this escalated quickly, didn't it? Um, I came here tonight prepared to vote on a either or for, for s- school booster debt versus handicapped children playground, um, and this has just gone off the rails. We're, so we're gonna give just carte blanche to the director to come back with anything he wants to bring for every school in the entire county, I see the most grandiose plan for every school in the county, and a pathway to do it, when we were gonna contribute five hundred thousand dollars, or up to eight hundred thousand, that we already had designated for something else towards this cause. I was prepared for that, but, man, this is a lot to consider all of a sudden now, we're, um, we've lost control of all of this now. So, this is gonna go to the school board, to, to the director, to come with anything he wants to designate for these playgrounds. Not really prepared for that, so I will not be supporting that.
Anyone else on this motion, let's not get beer off from this, on this particular motion, uh, Commissioner Mansfield?
I, I just wanna remind, I mean, I was shocked to see this in our budget, uh, this five hundred thousand dollar allocation, uh, esp- especially when the questions were never asked, asked or answered, how will this money be dispersed? Uh, there's approximately one million dollars left in booster club debt, and this is for only five hundred thousand dollars, and so, some of the questions are already, already asked, who's gonna go to, how you gonna divvy up, yada, yada, yada. Um, so, that's why I was like, I, I, when I'm against it, uh, I think Westmoreland's a different situation, I've explained that multiple times, I won't keep beating that horse. Um, but my motion, my amendment still stands, uh, that I'm still gonna support, is taking that five hundred thousand dollars from the Hospital Fund, plus the two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred nine from the Hospital Fund, and earmarked for this cause, and this cause alone. And I, I see, the Hospital Fund is kinda like, uh, ARPA funds, Mr. Chairman, I know you're ready to get rid of the ARPA funds, 'cause everybody's arguing over them, and just, let's, let's just commit them, allocate them, and, and get rid of them. I see the Hospital Fund, I, I, it's, it's been used for a lot of things that I didn't agree with and I didn't vote for. Uh, this is something I actually can agree with and vote for, um, is for this purpose, and I think it's time to just put that fund to rest, um, and to u- use those funds for this purpose. It's been asked for by the citizens, there's nothing stopping us. The school board, it's been said they have a plan to start, they're starting with two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're helping them, uh, with potentially eight hundred thousand dollars to get up to one point zero five million dollars, a million fifty thousand, to expedite that process, uh, over what their plan was to, at least by four times. So, I don't see any wrong, anything wrong with doing that tonight, and still, uh, I'm gonna stand by my amendment and vote against, uh, the amendment that's on the floor before my-
Any, anyone else to speak to this particular amendment, this particular amendment, all right, Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, I've listened to, to just a lot of the comments, and, uh, I, I, I'm glad we're finally doing something, uh, and that we're finally taking an interest in ADA. That, to me, is, is great, and I, I, I like what I'm hearing as far as let's get a plan together, uh, we'll get estimates, and let's address it, uh, when we have numbers in, and, and a plan put together. You know, it's, it's interesting, 'cause we, you know, getting some pushback on this, and it's, just as I was thinking through, uh, you know, getting the emails today, and, and just thinking- through, uh, you know, getting the emails today, and, and just thinking through this, it, it just reminded me that back in February of twenty twenty-three, sitting in Gen Ops Committee, we had an Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan that was presented to the General Ops Committee. This was an assessment done on all of our county buildings. Playgrounds was included in that. And there was some discussion on that. And it, it was just shocking because at that time, there was no interest in any of this. None. You know, even to this day, there's been zero interest. There's been zero action taken by the Gen Ops Committee, uh, to, to do anything ADA compliance. Uh, thank God for our county mayor, who, who's taken that upon himself to, to designate some projects within the line item in the budget, uh, to, to do the low hanging fruit. Uh, but for those who haven't seen it, it's not a shocker because after that commitment was over, this just disappeared. It's a five hundred page document right here. I'm going to ask this to be entered into the minutes so that the public can actually see it. This is an ADA Transition Plan that we have ignored for two and a half years. But now, it is front and center. I don't know if we're playing games or what the deal is, but thank God we're talking about it. And I think we need to do something about it. If we're going to do it, let's do it. You know? So I'm going to support this, and, you know, I think the maker of the motion, because I think it's the right thing to do. And it's time to do the right thing. And it's time to stop ignoring stuff. Because we have ignored this. This was given to us two and a half years ago, and nothing, nothing happened. Nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, now, we're speaking to this particular amendment. Commissioner Rogers, is that, okay. Any, anyone else, please, raise your hand. Commissioner Schuff?
He was.
Uh, Commissioner Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to be brief because I know it's been late for a lot of people. Um, I've received a lot of emails on this from a lot of concerned citizens. And someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe I heard, and I'm, I'll be honest, it may have been here tonight, or it may have been through some emails, or conversations I've had with citizens, but they're asking for at least one piece of playground equipment to be started, if I'm understanding correctly. So if we take one, two, or three pieces, um, to me, that's at least a start. I, yeah, I'm on the education committee. I don't get the impression that, and I'm not going to speak for the director of schools, but I don't get the impression that this is going to be an overnight fix. Um, it's going to be something that's going to have to be planned over several years, the impression I'm getting. Um, also, I think the citizens' expectations are, is just want to get something started. Um, Commissioner from the sixteenth district, I think is making, and I just want to clarify that, you know, the two hundred and ninety-seven above the five hundred thousand, I couldn't hear them, but is that coming from the hospital fund? It i- it is? Okay. So if we can't take the five hundred thousand because it's somehow line-iting the school budget, my, if we can't, and I guess I'll refer to legal on that, m- my, my thing would be, at least let's take the two hundred and ninety-seven or so thousand dollars that the commissioner from the sixteenth district has mentioned above the five hundred thousand, and allocate that tonight to go towards this, um, project. I, I'll just tell you, I've met a lot of parents. I'm not going to bring specifics how I've met them. I think everyone can read in between the lines, but I've met a lot of parents since, um, a missing child in this county, through a lot of prayer vigils. And I'm not bringing that in to politicize it. So please, if you're listening, don't take it as that. But I've met a lot of parents with autism, autistic kids. And I can't imagine, as a parent myself of two children, that I grew up taking to parks. I take, I took that for granted up until I met these parents a few years, a couple of years ago, and started that process. Because you don't know what they're going through, because the mental anguish of not being able to have your child use a piece of equipment may seem little here in perspective, but that's a huge thing for these parents. So all I'm saying is, if we cannot do the five hundred thousand as the commissioner from the sixteenth district is proposing, at least let's go two hundred and ninety-seven thousand tonight. And then let's get a plan together to move forward, uh, with this playground equipment going forward, whether it's a two-year process, however many year process it is. And I'll just finish on saying, look, we, I toured, and you and I probably were at all of them together, and other commissioners toured a lot of the schools through a joint effort with the director of schools and yourself. The perception that the schools, and, look, there's perception that the school, these schools are horrible. You read all this stuff out there. It's not true. I'm telling you it's not true. Go visit. If you haven't visited a school, and you do the tours this coming year, I urge any commissioner that has any doubt about how good our schools are, although not perfect, but nothing's perfect, go visit a school and take a tour, and talk to the teachers, and the educators, and the support staff that run those schools. Those people are dedicated people that love what they do. As, especially, um, on the few events that we've done at other schools, um, like the amazing shake and other events at Merrill Hyde, um, can't even think of the name right now, but, you know, y'all know where I'm going with this. There's, there's good things with the schools. So let, this narrative of, you know, schools are bad, and this guy's bad, it's got to stop. If this community is going to move forward, they got to stop the finger pointing. Two wrongs don't make a right. That's all I'm saying. Um, and I will get this out of the way, like I've done every year. Full disclosure, my wife does work for the county schools. She works for the city school, for the city too, in that capacity, and loves her job. Gets up, goes to work every day. And I can tell you, I had the privilege of working in that department around Thanksgiving. And I'm not being biased, but I can tell you, working with other employees, I see what they go through on a day-to-day basis. Again, these schools are good. Yeah, it's not perfect, but this narrative that Sumner County Schools is awful is putting a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths, and it's not true. So, uh, just full disclosure, I will be voting on the schools' budget tonight. But I just want to let you know that my wife does work for the school system, and, uh, just to be transparent. Thank you.
I'm in the queue on, on this one. And I'm, I'll try to be quick. I know we're going here. But this was, there was comment earlier, I came here to be this, this versus that, and I, maybe it was set up that way. Um, I, I'm not here, I'm going to, this is about me. Like, I'm just going to say this, this is how I work. I do not go out and try to, there's performative stuff, and there's let's solve it stuff. And I have absolutely engaged in performative stuff. We all do it. But generally speaking, I am not a problem finder. I'm not trying to go out there and find problems to like, throw at people. I want to be a problem solver. And if you want to solve a problem, it typically takes money. And so you, when you talk, with, the county has lots of problems. It is a, it is a matter of balancing, do I solve this problem, or that problem? If you were to choose not to solve the, not to solve the ADA compliance problem versus not solving more sheriffs, it does not make you evil. It means I, I have to choose. However, I believe that we have the intent here to actually try to solve a problem. I have no intent, I don't have any intent at all, to point any fingers, or try to play any games. I just want to know what the scope of the problem is. And I think we should try to know what the scope of the problem is. And it may be that that scope of the problem comes out, and it's thirty million dollars. And we're going to look at that thirty million dollars and say, whoa, that's a lot of money. And how much do we really want to sign up for? And that's okay. At least it's honest. At least it's honest, and then we can try to take a chunk out of it. But just taking a little bit here and throwing at it in order to appease people, like, that's, that's, that's performative. You either are performative, or you want to solve the problem. I want to solve the problem, or in order to solve the problem, I want to understand the problem. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your patience. I agree with the commissioner from the sixteenth on, let's just go ahead and earmark. I hate hearing about the hospital fund as well. Uh, been here about it for a long time. Um, let's earmark the money that he's saying. So if the original maker would be to amend whatever, which I believe is the chairman of the committee, to say, okay, we will earmark the five hundred plus the two eighty-seven to get us to that number, and then go about this. I know a lot of jokes are made about my attendance. I promise you, I will move heaven and earth to be here if we actually follow through with this. If we earmark the money that the sixteenth commissioner said, and we actually get a plan to actually take care of this, to work together with the school system, and say with that douper, that does something that does not allow us to pick and choose between our students at different schools. I want to say that, I don't know if the chairman of the committee can amend that to just, I think we're saying a lot of the same thing. Let's earmark the money that the sixteenth said, for the same purpose that, uh, the chairman said, and then let's get to work, and let me know when we're going to vote. I'm afraid what you will find out is, is all of a sudden, when there's a dollar down there, and it becomes, hey, we need to come up with two million dollars, all of a sudden, it'll be about taxes again, or we won't be able to swallow. Because I've just been here long enough to know that everybody likes to pay for raises, and sheriffs, and school safety, until it comes time to, you know, pay an extra eight dollars a year on their tax bill. And then they don't want to do it anymore, or they want to win another election. But I will be here whenever we do that, if, if we can assure that it gets there. And I will vote yes for the handicapped children in this county to get, treat it fairly for the first time in a long, long, long time. So I'm done for the evening.
All right. Uh, I think we are approaching, unless there's someone else, a time to vote. Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's been some wise things that have been said, and some wildly inaccurate, um, um, just not thought-out things. And I think that they all come from a good place. I think most of them, at least I want to believe that. But, you know, there's been statements made about performance versus, um, you know, like, trying to solve a problem. And, and there's been statements made about matching, you know, and, and I'll be here, all this, you know, we all feel this way, that we want to take care of the ADA kiddos. But you said it yourself, sir, you said it in that same seat, that we can't line item, unfortunately, what the school, or what the director spends on. And so therefore, if it were down to two million dollars, that wouldn't raise taxes, that would come from reserves, if that was important. But it's not the most important thing in the school's overall budget. I don't make that budget, but it's not. Who, whomever's deciding on that, it's not that. What the commissioner from the sixteenth district is saying, let's take almost eight hundred thousand dollars, and earmark it for that. We cannot line item. We can't. I get it. But another thing we can't do, or at least I'm not going to, is be irresponsible. And already, three quarters out of four of the citizens' tax money goes to the schools. And I love our kiddos, every one of them. I love, I love every, every level of child. We all do. I don't think there's anybody in here that argue that. I'm not one of a kind. We all love all the children there. But the thing is, is when we get emotional, thinking, oh, man, we are going to fix this in a, in an industry or a, or an area of government, we cannot line item. You hear me? I'm not saying anything disparaging. I'm just saying the truth. We're being foolish because we're already giving three out of four quarters of not my money, not our, well, some of it's mine, but not our money. It is the citizens' money given away, wherever it is. It doesn't matter if we're buying, you know, Post-it notes here. It's citizens' money. It's not revenue that we make. We're not earning it. We're taking it. And I think that what we got to make sure we remember is, eight hundred thousand dollars, that's not going to come from citizens, is amazing. I think it would hopefully set a precedent to where that we would say, hey, we, we, we care about these kiddos. Let's start doing something about it. Let's shine a light on it. Because we're wildly non-compliant across the county, and not just in the schools. The schools are non-compliant. The county buildings are non-compliant. Uh, Commissioner Nguyen said something great about that. We are non-compliant. And I agree. But I think that us fighting over this, and having a peeing match over something so silly, it's children's lives. We're talking about little things over here, but children, that we're not even talking about a swing. We're talking about not being able to get to the playground. I mean, there's some serious things. And the silly thing we're talking about is how we're going to decide it down the road, and how we're going to divvy up money that's not even ours to spend. And so I just think it's time that we stop playing games. I love every one of y'all, but we play a lot of games. And I think that we do need to have the whole, put your money, put your money where, where your mouth is, the performance. I love that idea, if it's your money. But it's not. It's theirs. And so when we're, when we're taking money that they don't have to take and increase any taxes, take this eight hundred thousand dollars almost, and give it over to the director of schools for that reason, I think that is a wonderful gesture. I don't think that anyone would see that otherwise. But if we get into millions and trillions and gazillions of dollars that is not ours to spend, it's not our money to put where our mouth is. So I just really encourage you, vote on this amendment. We can talk about, we can assess the damage and see how much is needed, but so can, so can the schools. And also, I make a request and a plea from you, because I believe it's unethical, and I'm going to ask you to not allow anyone who has a conflict of interest with their spouse to vote on any budget.
That's, that's, that's.
Thank you.
No, I, I know, that's not possible. Okay, um, are we ready to vote? Commissioner Becker?
Okay. So from what I'm hearing, I, I think, I think we all agree that we want to put money toward this ADA playground stuff. I think it's, it's, it's clearly an initiative that I hear that we're all in agreement on, which is a rare thing some of these days, that we're all in agreement on it. I think the only thing that's still in question is, do we earmark eight hundred and something thousand dollars now, or remove the line item, and then have the time to get the legal advice and say, okay, what is the right way to do it? And then in parallel, the director of schools can start putting together a plan. And, and I don't know, I heard someone comment later, or back here, uh, District Twenty-three, maybe. But like, like, we're not, I, I'm not signing up to like, a blank check, that whatever the director of schools comes and says, hey, it's thirty million dollars. I'm, we're, no one is signing up for that right now. Uh, hopefully. But, um, that, that's not what was stated earlier. So I'm glad we were able to clear that up. But what we are, we are wanting to do, some of us, is have a plan laid out to what, you know, what, what does it look like? Now, I'm going to do a little parallel with this lease thing that we've got going. We've got several commissioners here that don't want to go with that lease because there's not a plan laid out. They don't want to spend money because there's no plan. And now those same commissioners are saying, hey, let's give eight hundred thousand dollars without any plan. And I'm okay, I, I see it. I, I, I'm both ways. I, I get it, right? I'm completely, hey, I want to give this money for the ADA stuff too. And what I said a second ago, I think all of us agree to do that. So I, I, again, I think, I think the proper way is to remove the five hundred thousand from the schools, um, uh, the school-related nonprofit debt payoffs. So now that five hundred thousand dollars is not being touched by anybody. And then we have the opportunity to move forward, and if we want to allocate the eight hundred thousand dollars, we, we can do that, or earmark it, whatever, uh, we can do so. But, you know, sitting here at what time, whatever time it is here, almost eleven o'clock, and we're talking about depleting our entire, um, hospital fund, may be the right thing to do. I would like a little bit of time to figure out, hey, is that exactly what we want to do? Because we can, we can come up with money for the ADA stuff outside of this eight hundred thousand dollars, if we wanted to do that. So instead of rushing the opinion here, that's why I'm in favor of removing the five hundred thousand dollar tonight, and then circling back around and earmarking it next month, or the next month after. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Mansfield?
Yeah, I just want to clarify some, I guess, just a few quick things. Um, the ADA plan for the county, that is a, I wasn't on the general operations committee then, but, um, that, it does not include playgrounds for kids. It's, it's, it's bringing county buildings that are twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years old, up to compliance and standards, uh, on a s- a path. Uh, the, uh, current, last year's budget, this year's budget, almost four hundred thousand dollars, the county commission's appropriated towards ADA compliance for bringing county buildings up to standard. So county commission's been making, uh, steady improvements in that. Understand that's what the school board's doing, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. But I'd be remiss to say, allegedly, the school board has not made any progress on that until now. Like, there's been no, all of the, their playgrounds are out of compliance. out of compliance, and so there's been zero progress. So, I applaud them for taking the step, $250,000. This obviously was a reaction that school board member King saw the $500,000 for the school board debt, which, a booster debt, which he, which he disagreed with, and I agree with him on that one. And citizens, citizens saw this as an item in here that was literally, we're going to vote on this budget tonight, having not stood up and said something, to allocate this money for booster club debt. So, if, whatever the body wants to do, but I'm still going to stand by my amendment of reallocating that towards ADA compliant playgrounds, just to help the schools out. Now, the schools asked for $5.4 million last year that they didn't need. At first it was for teacher raises, it wasn't for that, athletic facilities, it wasn't for that, and it's just like general purpose use. And then they turned in a $17 million surplus on top of that. So yes, the school board has money to do the ADA compliant playgrounds today, you know, outside of their undesignated reserves, that approximately $27 million, that's undesigned of the $143 million as of last year. So, there's money there to put towards that, should they want to. But, again, good faith effort, we're going to do this. I agree with a fellow commissioner from the Leavens District, I'm ready to get rid of this fund. Personally, I think we just don't need to, we just earmark it for the $800,000, or the $797,202 that I'm recommending, that is presented in the budget tonight on the hospital fund, on the ledger, in total, and that's still my amendment. So, I just wanted to clarify those things.
Okay. Let's narrow our focus to this particular amendment, okay? Commissioner Teichner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Just to clarify one thing, just as, as the one who seconded the one before this, just a point of clarification, if you don't mind. The reason why I seconded it is because we are actually, my second was to earmark it, and then it will come back through the commission with a plan on how we would like to see that allocated out. We're just saying earmarked for ADA compliant playgrounds. That's all we can do at this point, because it's too much money to just bring through without there being a full slate. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
All right. I think we are re, are we ready to vote?
I'd like to state the amendment, because I think there's some confusion.
All right, restate the amendment.
The amendment is, is actually not that. The amendment is very simply, I'm not necessarily against it, but just to keep it simple, to, to strike all of the removal of the 500, the $797,000 from the hospital fund in entirety. So that just goes back to where it was, excuse me, $500,000, it goes back to where it was. It's not going to go toward booster club debt, and it's not going to be earmarked to this either. We just, we just set it back where it was, take a pause, and then we submit, we request the school board to submit a, an estimate of what it would take to bring these facilities up to ADA compliance, and a statement of how much they are able to contribute toward that effort. That's what my amendment is.
All right. Okay. All right, we're ready to post this for a vote then, this amendment?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Wynn?
We, we were close. So, yeah, I don't know, the comment was made that our ADA plan did not contain playgrounds. Page three, annex H, is playgrounds. I don't, I just, we're going to throw stuff out there, might as well have the facts.
Is it on the amendment?
It is on the amendment. So, yeah, the, the, just to level set a little bit, the school board did approve $250,000 to engage a consultant to develop an ADA transition plan for 28 elementary school playgrounds. So, that, that plan is essentially in the starting phases, and like, all, all we would need to do is wait for that plan to be developed, and then we would make decisions after that as to what, what our buy-in's going to be, how much we would be willing to fund. So, I, I, like, I'll commend the, the school board that they did a great job in taking the, the effort, recognizing it and prioritizing that. You know, it's, it's often said, if it's important, you put it on a calendar and you sign a dollar amount to it, the school board did it, and now we're, we're filing suit. So, I, I think that the approach that's, that's on the table now is the correct approach. We'll just pull it back, and we can, nothing's going to break between now and the time this assessment comes out. So, we, we should just push pause and wait.
All right, we're ready to vote. So, if you'll post that, Madam Court? Commissioner Rogers, are you in the queue?
I was in the queue.
I've been trying to make another motion for the pleasure of all patients.
Good, okay. Commissioner Miller?
This is kind of a question. If we earmarked the money, the 500 plus the two whatever from the hospital fund, would that not get us started on something for these children that start school next week? So how long is that process going to take for us to get a number, to see how long? These kids are literally, like these parents said, sitting on the sidelines while all the other children get to play. If we took 700, 800, whatever thousand dollars it is, couldn't we just give that to the schools to get started, to do something while they come up with a plan, so these kids don't have to continue to sit on the sidelines with 40 minutes now of play? So, that's why I'll be voting on the amendment. I want to support the children, and I want to give them some money so that these kids don't have to watch their peers that have, you know, the privileges of what they already have. So I'm voting on the amendment, no on the amendment, not because I don't want to help the children, but because I think we need to give them some money now to let's get it started while they're coming up with a plan, because we see how long the bleachers took.
Well, I, I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm trying to clarify what we have here. I'm terribly afraid somebody will get in the queue, but in any, in any.
I'm headed, I just want to ask one question to the chair, to the chairman.
Well, let me finish before I, I forget what I'm saying. If we give, I, I'm not against that at all, Commissioner, but I think what this plan is saying, instead of just giving the Board of Education $500,000, it's not going to go anywhere anyway until they decide what is the appropriate places and how, what, what are we going to do? And we're asking for that in order to know what we're giving the $500,000 for. So, um...
That, that wasn't my amendment, but...
And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, in theory. I really do. And I agree with my fellow commissioner here. Nothing's going to get done if we're already walking this sideline to being, you kind of agree on, but kind of earmarking this muddy lot anyways. So, why not for the people? I've heard that thing a lot, that we've got hundreds of emails, I've heard that numbers. If the, if the maker would just say...
I, I will, I will, we'll earmark it, we'll earmark it, there we go. We'll earmark the, but wait, we'll earmark the 500, and wait, is the second good with it?
Would you please direct everything to me?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend my motion to earmark the $500,000. It's not going to make any difference. I mean, man, this stuff frustrates me, because there, it, this is not going to make a one second of difference to when a kid gets a, to get on that playground. It's not. It's not going to make one damn second. But we want, I'm going to earmark it, $500,000. Is the second good with it?
Here is the thing, the long and short of this is, we can sit here and jawjack all night long about nothing, take a vote and get it done.
I make the change, okay, second good with it?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Yep, we're moving on.
Post that, Madam Clerk.
I got a point of, point of information, just for clarification for my amendments.
What you're saying?
I just have a question for my amendment. Like, so, if, if this passes, is it going to negate my amendment completely? I guess at this point, I'm just clarifying it, so. I'm against this amendment, just because I, I don't think it's...
If it's an amendment, I would say that we would need to go back and vote on it as, again, as amended. Would you agree with that?
I don't know what the original was.
Well, uh...
The, the original allocation was $500,000 to school.
We could take, we could tie that knot very quickly. We'll vote on the main motion again.
Well, I mean, I'm against this amendment, but I'm for mine, so I just, that's what I'm...
You pull yours?
I'm for my amendment, no, I'm for it, but I'm against this one, this proposed one.
Place this on the board.
The amendment is five hundred thousand.
The amendment of, for a plan for the Board of Education.
Each commissioner records her vote.
All right, with a vote of 14 positive, we will ask the Board of Education for a plan. Now we'll vote on this as amended.
And just to be clear, that, that did earmark that $500,000?
Yeah, I'm on, I got another amendment.
Okay.
I want to earmark 297, 297,202 dollars.
Second.
Second.
From the hospital fund.
For what?
From the hospital fund towards ADA compliant playgrounds for the schools, specifically. So, I want to take the rest of the balance.
To be a part of the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
The balance of the hospital fund, the remaining balance.
All right, motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right, vote's taken. It's an amendment.
Wait. All right, Commissioner Wynn?
Yeah, uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I, I was, wanted to make an amendment on the amendment. I, I would like to take that 297, 202, and let's earmark that towards the volunteer fire department.
We have voted.
Yeah. I didn't vote, so it was...
I'm, I'm sorry.
Reconsider.
All right.
Don't reconsider.
Anyone want, the prevailing side, someone can reconsider?
I don't think we're, I got one or more, can I speak here?
Pardon?
I don't, I don't think this amendment is, is worthy of being discussed right now, because it's, it's undoing the amendment we just voted to do. It, it's exactly, it's just undoing it. I think it's a completely separate motion. After we vote on the amendment, the amended motion, then if they want to add the 297, it, we, we need to get, no, we haven't, we have not voted on the mo, the amendment. We have yet to vote on the amendment. Okay, so we'll make sure, because I don't think we're all clear. So the $500,000 that we amended the amendment successfully, we, we haven't voted on that yet. So the amendment right now we're discussing is to undo the amendment we just, that we just voted to do. It, so that's out of order.
Point of order. My amendment was to allocate $800,000, take the 500 and the 279. The amendment to the amendment eradicated everything I was trying to do, completely. So, it, you, you, the amendment was, the amendment of Commissioner Shof that you guys voted on was strictly to take $500,000.
Wait just a minute. I'm, I'm going to take privilege as chairman to, to make a statement, not for or against anything, but just to say to you that I sat for a number of days, all day. So did some of you that I see in here. The Budget Committee worked tirelessly, for hours and hours, on putting this budget together. We were all very, very tired when we went home. And I think personally, and you can feel however you want to, but I'm telling you how I feel personally, I personally feel somewhat insulted, that we come here in just a few minutes and think we can change the world. We're, we could be here from now to this time next week, unless we accept some good hard work of the Budget Committee and move on with this. It's absolutely ridiculous. Okay, Commissioner Mansfield?
I was just trying to state that what, what you guys voted on was putting $500,000, just put it back in, it didn't touch the rest of it, and didn't earmark as far as the entire amount, unless I'm just completely mistaken. But it was for 500, the only thing it was mentioned was $500,000. It did not mention the 297,202 or the remaining balance. So my amendment to that...
Could we do that later?
I mean, I can, but I mean, just, but, I, I made a, my amendment is to add the remaining balance to what we just did. It was not included, and that's...
Is there a second?
Yes, there was a second, and we voted on it, it passed.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I had an amendment, I didn't have that amendment.
But it was already passed.
That was my amendment.
That didn't pass.
I mean, you took the votes, but...
I don't know who voted, I don't know who voted.
Okay. It was a voice vote.
Mr. Chairman, that's a division, I ask.
Division of the House, all right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to, I want to make sure I understand the amendment. I'm, I'm waiting, so I can, everybody can hear. I'm still waiting. All right, I'll just speak loudly. So, my amendment, earmarked the $500,000. My amendment earmarked the $500,000 and asked the schools to come back, it, for, with an estimate. Then we, it did not commit anything else, just an estimate. The, the, that was not the remainder of the balance, so that passed. Then, the maker of the, of the, the other amendment, we were up a level, onto the main at that point, and so the, the, the next amendment was to add back in the 200 and, the, the remainder of the balance on top of what had been earmarked. Is that, is that what we're voting on here?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Correct.
Yep.
All right, let's just, want to talk, want to talk about it, let's just vote on it.
This will be like, real quick, I just, I need to do something for the record.
All right, all right.
Now that I've seen the commissioner from the sixteenth district bring up his remaining money over the $500,000, I'm asking the clerk to change my vote on Commissioner Shof's original with the, you know, to allocate the 500 from no to yes. So I'm a yes vote for Commissioner Shof's and for Mr. Mansfield's. I just originally voted no because I wasn't sure that the remainder of the money was going to be allocated for that. Thank you.
We'll do that. We're going to vote now, as a division of the House, okay?
Each commissioner records her vote.
Eighteen to five on that. Okay. Is there anything else in regard to this? Okay.
If I can, I'd like to still make the amendment to go back and allocate the money we just allocated, the 297, 202, to the volunteer fire department.
We think, Commissioner Wynn, we think that the other's been disposed of now, that you just have to make a motion, not an amendment.
Then I'll make that a motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Who made the second?
Ms. Flannery.
Motion and a second, that this would, what?
Uh, that we, that we replace the earmark for the remaining balance of 297, 202 to the volunteer fire department. So, we, we just earmarked originally $500,000 for the ADA playgrounds, and then we just took a vote to give up to the $800,000. So that, that second block there, that 297, 202, the remainder, to earmark that for volunteer fire.
We, we understand. All right, and this is what the commissioner is saying, and there is a second, that we will take that additional 200 and whatever amount of money, and, uh, it's pretty clear cut, you're for it or against it, and you could do it with a vote, but we'll listen to...
We're going to play, that's okay. I, I did not want to do this. I want the red. I want the red.
There we go. Okay. So, no, 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 like, I mean, look, I'm being joking here, but this is what I'm talking about. This is this performative crap. Like, oh, I either, here, here's what we have. We want to set up a scenario where you either have to hate firemen, or you hate kids. That's what this is for. No, that is, no, 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 shit here, that's what it's for. So here's, so here's, I'm about solving problems. So, so the problem that we have, that Mr. Palmeroy has said, that this commission, this commission has danced around it for 15 years, the problem that we have is that we don't... The problem that we have is that we don't have enough money to properly fund a fire department. We ain't got it. I've been in the budget doing it for three years, we ain't got the money to properly do it. The county has grown a lot out in the, out in the, out in the county. It's grown because we've been dumping, we've been dumping developments out there. We've outgrown what our ability to do is. So here's what we're going to do, if you, do you really want to solve the problem? Here's what I want to do, I want to make a motion, I'm going to amend your motion to put to referendum a fire tax. All right, let's see how, let's see what, let's see what people want to vote for a fire tax, huh? So I don't have a vote in, but that's what I do, referendum for a fire tax, that's my amendment. Let's see if we want to solve the problem.
The county attorney says we cannot do that, so Commissioner, Teichner?
Why, why not? I don't understand why not.
Mr. Attorney, would you like?
The county can only do a referendum on an item that the statutes expressly provide for, and the fire tax is not one of those items.
So I can't have a question on a referendum that states something to the following. Do the residents of the unincorporated areas support a tax for improved fire service? A question, not a dollar amount, a question. I'd like to hear the Finance Department on that one as well.
That's, there's no statute that provides for it, so I can't tell you you can.
Well, I want to do it anyway. And so if somebody says I can't, then let them sue me.
It's not the first time I've been told that.
Let's take the vote.
All right.
Let's take the vote.
You made a motion and a second, the attorney has said it's not legal, so we will have to vote with that in mind because it's an opinion. All right, Teichner, Commissioner Teichner?
It's not on this amendment, so I, sorry. I, I do want to be in the queue, but it's, it's on, it's on Commissioner Nguyen's amendment, but it's not on this amendment. Or what, I don't know what happens.
I've, I've brought this forward in budget for the, and mentioned it in budget for past two years. Sent it to the Budget Committee members as, as options. I did explore some options with our, my state representative and a couple of the legal staff for the state legislature. Basically, there, here are the options for county taxpayers if they want fire service in the unincorporated part. There's four options. One is what's our current model, where the VFD, VFDs continue to have residents donate through campaign drives and fundraisers, just voluntarily. And if everybody would contribute, they would be adequately funded. But the problem is county residents don't contribute to their county fire departments, and if they did, this problem be solved. Second model is also part of our current model, I'm just kind of broken out into these parts, that the volunteer fire departments continue to have the county, meaning city and unincorporated residents, funding through charitable contributions. And in some regards, that's involuntarily. Our, our entire charitable contribution process is an involuntary process. So a new model that I've tried to present is that the VFDs move to a subscription-based model, such as Blount County, which is a public utility, which the state would have to change a bracketing, population bracketing to do something like that, I've already talked to the state representatives about that. Or there are cities like Karnes, Tennessee, which is a nonutility district that has gone to a, a subscription-based model. And I'll say that's a mix of voluntary and involuntary, but voluntary meaning the unincorporated or the city residents are alerted to the fact of, hey, if you want fire protection for us to come out, it might be, we'll charge you two hundred bucks a year. And there's a lot of people give seventy-five dollars a year, six hundred dollars a year to our current volunteer fire departments, you know, citizens do. And so I'm just throwing out a number here, say a hundred and fifty dollars a year, two hundred dollars a year. That's what these subscription-based model is. And if you, people in the unincorporated areas of the county understand that they don't have city services. That includes fire and police, they have sheriff, but they don't have police, like city police, they don't have fire. They don't have necessarily sewer or water, they might be on a well or septic. They do not have trash service, so they, they, they don't pay the taxes on it. And so that's what unincorporated city, unincorporated county residents understand and do is when they live out in that, that area. So what the subscription model does, it says, hey, if the, if a volunteer fire department chooses to go to subscription model, they're going to let everybody in their service area know, hey, this is what we're doing. You can either pay X amount of dollars a year, or just not do anything and just throw the, throw the, gamble the dice, and if we come out to you, we're going to charge you three to four thousand dollars to put out the fire. And that'll be, you know, and so that's what Blount County does, that's what these cities do in Tennessee. There is a model, and there is a precedence for that, for fire service. And then as a fellow commissioner says, is another option is to send a referendum to unincorporated residents to vote on creating fire tax districts to raise property taxes in unincorporated areas, which would create a new countywide fire department similar or greater in scope, budget, and magnitude to the EMS department, which is like seventeen million dollars or fourteen, seventeen million dollars now. Fire department would be more than that, and that was mentioned by a volunteer fire department supporter during the public comments. I've asked, a lot of my residents are in the unincorporated areas, and I've asked them, do you want to be taxed more for this service? And like, no. And so I encourage them, I've always been a supporter of volunteer fire departments, I've always voted for funding and budget increases, and I'll share briefly what I did, that was, my name was mentioned on this piece of paper back in March, and my recommendation was. I will not support, I mean, I know we can't do a referendum on a fire tax, but you could do a private act, send it up to the state legislature asking them to do it. So that's another way to do it, I'll offer that as a suggestion. But I'm not in support of it because I know my county residents do not want their property taxes raised to create yet another county department and government that will grow in magnitude and scope and will continually to increase their taxes exponentially, because it will be very expensive. I remember Commissioner Mo Taylor and I were talking about this when I first got elected, and he had approached our Finance Department about this, like, what, how much money would it be? And it would be a substantial amount on the tax rate for unincorporated citizens for this. Easiest, best solution for me is a subscription model, because that is the most capitalistic way. You pay if you want it, if you don't, and you know the, here's the problem, if you don't do this, you're going to pay three or four thousand dollars for that house fire. Now, the probability of your house catching on fire is very low, so that's a risk that people take. You know, so only ten percent of all nine-one-one calls are fire-related nationwide as an average, and that was a couple of years ago, it might have changed a little bit. So I'm not going to support this because I know my constituents do not support a fire tax, but I do support measures to increase funding. And, you know, we, we've taken six million dollars and given to the schools when they didn't need it, in my opinion, to increase the MOE, when I think we could have given that to the fire department back in March. I did make a motion in legislative, it was asked for me to bring that forward in legislative, and I did so. And basically, what my motion was, was according to TCA five dash nine dash one oh one, I proposed that we eliminated the current nonprofit allocation process for VFDs that we're doing right now. And instead do a simple nonprofit donation allocation to each, department's probably not the right word, fire hall. There's thirteen fire halls, I'll say, so, that we have. So my, my motion in legislative that we sent to budget back in March was to give them each ninety thousand dollars a year with no other pots of money to be shared. Right now, they got this pot of money to share, and then we're giving them each individually, and they get together and figure out on this pot of money, hey, do you want twenty grand, fifty grand, five grand, what is your need? And the fire chiefs do it amongst themselves, but that's their prerogative because we're not involved, it's nonprofit, we can't be involved. We just give them the money as a nonprofit allocation. So what my motion was is to give them ninety thousand dollars per a fire hall, and they could do best with it what they, they wanted to do. And, you know, we didn't increase, last year from the previous year, we increased the, by fifty-two percent, from four hundred fifty thousand dollars up to six hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's approximately fifty-two percent increase we gave them last year. This year is six hundred ninety thousand dollars, is in our budget. So still a little bit more, but if you, and my proposal, if you gave each of them ninety thousand dollars, it would have taken that six eighty up to one point one seven million dollars, which is less than, it's like a four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase, four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollar increase. That would be, that would be recurring yearly, but it's cheaper than what was proposed for the step raises tonight. I mean, it was cheaper, I mean, if, being honest, I mean, but this is recurring money. So it's, that would, would have been a seventy-two percent increase per department based on what they got, if you, if you pull out the allocations. So I don't necessarily, am not going to make a motion to do that because I'm not, I know we have, we're not paying any money in debt service this year, it's not even on the budget. It just kind of shocked me because I've, it's my seventh year being here, and I've never seen debt service, penny's not allocated to paying down debt. So we're not paying down debt this year. I understand, I've heard the reasonings why, so I'm not going to argue that. But I do know that we possibly have funds, so my request would be is to send this back to budget in your request for this, this type of thing. Send it back to budget, see what we have, if we can come up with four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in our budget to allocate, to go with my original plan that came out of legislative, that we passed unanimously out of legislative, I believe, or might have been one, one person voted against, I think you might have voted against it. But it, it did go almost unanimously to the Budget Committee for this purpose, to look at it. It hasn't happened yet, but I think that's a better plan than fire taxes. I think it's a better plan, it, obviously, it helps bridge some gaps for our volunteer fire departments now. It's not a magic bullet solution, but it's exponentially a lot more than they had two years ago, going from four hundred fifty thousand dollars up to one point one seven million dollars. So I guess I would make an amendment to defer this back to budget completely so that we can relook at my original proposal that came out of legislative.
All right, the motion is. Is this to, is this to this amendment?
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, you've been here a long time, and I'm not talking about tonight, I'm talking about over the years and people. I just, it, it's like being in New York City or even at a Titans game when they used to do the shell games. Like, literally forty-two minutes ago, we were just talking about moving this five hundred thousand from paying off a debt for a book school board and making an effort to start something with our ADH compliant playgrounds. And we had, none of us have any idea what we're talking about right now. Now we're talking about a fire tax. I will tell you back in two thousand and fourteen that we were given fifteen thousand dollars per department. I will tell you from a guy who is in the insurance business, that we are in the fire business. I've said this, Mr., one of the citizens, I can't say his name, but he will tell you, he's heard me say this from time to time. We are going to get sued one day, somebody is going to die in a fire, and we are going to get sued, and we are going to lose because you don't get it both ways. You don't get to say this is just five oh one C three donation, and we're in the fire business. Matter of fact, we've gone up over three hundred percent, I believe, since two thousand and fourteen. We're just in it poorly. We sit up here and let our firefighters say they can't even change the oil in their trucks. We can't even change the oil in our apparatuses, and we want to say, well, we're really not in the fire business, we have no liability in this. We vote for things to go out there, and we fund hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, we're just in it poorly. But nobody's wanted to talk about that for years. But this shell game that we're talking about, that Mr. Chairman's trying to get across is, we don't even know what we're voting for anymore. We, no tax increase, balanced budget, everybody's coming back in here, and now it's like, oh, well, that's not good enough because now we gotta, we gotta fight over this. Oh, well, we all finally agreed to say, okay, let's just give the seven hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars for, for the, for the ADH. And then somebody says, well, no, 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 I got to do something better than that, give it to the firemen. And we'll vote for that, and then somebody's going to get in the queue and say, well, no, 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 I got to do something better than that. And then somebody's going to get in the queue on another row and say, I don't want to spend a dime for this county. And then we're just going to be on this hamster wheel, so I don't even know, Mr. Chairman, really. But if, if he trumps what he said, I, I don't think that we never voted for what he said, we haven't voted for what he said. I just don't know, so all you in the audience and on TV, this is why we get nothing done, and nobody's ever happy. Because for years, it was this bunch of taxing spend liberals up here. Well, now you got a balanced budget, and we're finding a way to spend one hour and fifty-seven minutes fighting over two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So I don't know how we get people to vote on something, but I would love if you knew a way to get us, I want to vote on this, and after we do, I'm going on.
Well, we're going to vote on, we need to take care of the motion before we do anything else on the prayer motion.
I've been in the queue for a little bit, don't mind, I'd like to speak.
All right, go ahead.
We have sat here for hours discussing budgets, discussing, discussing playgrounds that are not ADA compliant. Why in the crap are they not ADA compliant? Who's behind on the eight ball there? Is it us? Whose responsibility are the playgrounds? Anybody?
Schools.
Thank you. Whose responsibility is it to take care of my constituents who are outside of the city limits and they need fire protection? Whose responsibility is that? That's mine, that's ours. I hear everybody griping and complaining about taxes. I'm not going to support a fire tax, that's horse crap, people. Nineteen seventy-five, February, our house caught on fire. We didn't have a volunteer agency, we had to call Portland City. They told us it'd be a hundred dollars for them to come out. Back then, there wasn't cell phone, crappy, it's good if you had a regular landline. Twenty minutes later, I done dragged dad out from underneath the crawl space of the floor, trying to put the fire out, knocked a hole in the back wall behind the fireplace, stuck a sprinkler down there with a water hose, and put it out our damn set! We didn't have a volunteer agency. Twenty minutes later, Portland calls. We just want to know if you're going to pay the hundred dollar deductible. One of the few times I ever heard my daddy cuss, and he give them a mouthful. We done had it put out, people, but we still needed somebody out there. Y'all want to know why I am so passionate about my volunteer agencies? Because I almost sat there as a ten-year-old child and watched my home burn. Because we didn't have a volunteer agency. These guys and gals, they respond, it don't matter if you have a penny in your pocket or you're a millionaire. It don't matter, they're going to come out and help you out. Some of you folks that live in the city limits, you think y'all got it made? Think about how many times y'all cross that line outside of city limits and you're in the county. Who do you think is going to respond and hopefully plug holes so that you can survive? It's going to be one of these volunteer folks, they're the ones that are going to do that. I won't, I ain't, I'm not going to vote for a fire tax. We need to support our volunteer agencies. We are not going to get any more bang for our buck than what we do with our volunteer agencies. Thank you.
All right, this is a vote to defer, and then after that, we'll just see where we sent, no, we're voting to defer, we need to take care of that.
It's for that, Mr. Hyde, it's important.
All right, let's hear it.
So Robert's Rule states, Mr. Hyde, I've been waiting in the queue because I was trying to wait for when it's appropriate. Robert's Rule states that you cannot rescind a vote you just took unless the prevailing side makes a motion to reconsider. And my friend from the fifteenth was not the prevailing side. So if somebody wants to do all that, all of this is null and void, we don't need to be voting on this. And I, I wish y'all would have caught it, but prevailing side would have had to bring it up, we can bring up anything. But it already passed, we already allocated it. And then Mr. Nguyen asked if we could take it from the disabled children's playground and give it to volunteer firemen. Both important, but we've already voted on the disabled children's playground.
We have not.
We, yes, we did, yes, sir, we did, one million percent. And then we put it on the. And then we put it on the, then we put it up on the board. Yes, we did.
Be quiet just a moment, please, and let us...
Thank you, please.
What, uh, this, I'm talking about the two hundred ninety-seven thousand, we voted on five, and not the two hundred ninety-seven.
But he, he made, I believe, Commissioner Mansfield's amendment was to encapsulate the balance of the hospital fund, and that was allocated to the ADA work group. So I think that's been voted on. So the whole, this is all about the whole hospital fund. That hospital fund is...
I don't, I don't think we can bring another separate vote up to deal with some of those just voters. That's, that's what's happening here.
All right.
And the only way, but the only way around it would be that we say that, uh, his amendment, and then we never voted in its entirety, taking the two amendments into account. That's what I'm unclear on. Did we do a final vote after those two motions to amend were done?
Well, I tried to, and I don't think it...
I, that, that's where we stand short. So I would ask for some clarity.
Mr. Chairman, before we take that amendment, I was asking, okay, anybody that wants to make an amendment, there's one more.
I just want y'all to know, anytime you make an amendment for something, to your point, Mr. Chairman, we spend a lot of time here. Now, there's two, two times we've had amendments for things that we want to monkey around with. Anything that gets done, I'm gonna double down on it and make it into something big. Because here's what's happening. We're trying to tie, we're trying to like pick and like make a little thing. You know, you can pick apart any budget, I'm, I'm seriously about to resign from the budget chair. Because you can pick apart anything when you're trying to do something and make some little part of it wrong. I do not have it perfect, but what's, what's funny about it is when I, you actually, you're identifying this little problem, but that little problem, you're like, ooh, look at that little problem, that problem's a lot bigger than what most people are willing to sign up for through that check. And I'm gonna make that super clear for every single, everybody in here who wants to nitpick this budget. I'm gonna make it real stupid real quick, and I'll say nothing more.
I'm totally surprised that someone, uh, with such a waste of time, it's not a matter of being here, because I'm gonna order out in a little bit. Doesn't bother me, but with the waste of time that we have, I'm surprised that someone hasn't called for a question on voting for the budget. But, uh, the attorney will give an, the attorney will give an opinion.
The way I understand, the way this has transpired is the original motion came up. Commissioner Chauvin did an amendment. Commissioner Mansfield did an amendment. We now have the two resolved amendments leaving the final motion. I thought we voted on your amendment.
My amendment's deferred. No, 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 we're talking about...
No, but we vote, we voted on your balance of the hospital fund.
Let the attorney have the floor.
We voted on the balance of the hospital fund to be allocated for the ADA school playground. That's where everything ended. Yes, so we are now waiting on a vote. The, the amendments passed, we're just wait...
We're waiting for what?
We, we never voted on your, your amendment.
What should, what would be your recommendation at this time? I had suggested we go back and vote on for, uh, Chairman, a, a motion as amended.
We, yes, that's exactly where I think the vote stands.
All right. The attorney, the attorney is, is saying that we should go back and vote on Commissioner Mansfield's motion as amended.
Yes.
And that's what I had suggested a little while ago, but put that on the board and let's vote as amended.
On the board, I mean, we did vote for mine, didn't we?
Wait, which, which vote? Well, I think we...
For the two ninety, two ninety-seven.
We've only got as far as the two amendments, which now take care of the hospital fund.
That's what I was asking about.
That's correct, yes. So now we need to just vote that that money, as it was amended, is now, uh, what was the original motion?
It was seven, well, no. What, the original motion for Commissioner Chauvin, going way back then, was five hundred thousand dollars that was allocated to school dubs to just... Well, my original motion, but it got amended by Commissioner Chauvin, his pass.
Five hundred thousand dollars of it.
Correct, and that's why I came back and made my amendment to re, to allocate the remaining balance of the hospital fund, which is...
Correct. That got voted on.
It did get voted on, in my understanding. It did get voted on.
We've allocated the full amount of that fund we're talking about. Now we just need to vote on the motion. Most of the main, the main motion...
Main motion is on the board.
The main motion, what is the main motion?
No, no, no.
No, the main motion of deferred the hospital fund money.
Right here's where we are.
With, with the, with basically the restriction of the full, full balance to it, okay. So let's vote.
On the, on the board. We're not, let's, what?
Chairman, I, I made amendment first to allocate the additional monies over to the fire department. It wasn't, uh, uh, any kind of action to, if you do this, you hate that, it's not any of that. There's both needs, we're just trying to solve for both needs with what monies that we know we have available today. Uh, and, and that was my amendment. I was told, no, you need to do it in a motion. So we make a motion, so, and that was all seconded. I, I don't understand how we're getting now, we're just like, we're just wipe this off the, the table, and...
Well, it, it doesn't matter whether you understand, or I understand, or anybody else understands. He's giving an opinion, I accept it, and he's saying we should vote on the motion, on his motion.
Okay, and...
As amended.
Yeah, and before that we did that, I was making an amendment to that motion uh, for exactly what, what we were just spun off on all this conversation.
Yeah, yeah, and he says you can't do that.
Why can I not do that? It was properly seconded.
Commissioner Beck...
We did a voice vote on it. Point of information.
Okay, so from my understa-, from my recollection, we, this is my understanding. Commissioner Mansfield made an amendment for seven hundred ninety-seven thousand. Mr. Chauvin made an amendment to the amendment to change that to five hundred thousand. We voted on that. Mr. Mansfield made an amendment to add two ninety-seven to that five hundred thousand. We've, we voice voted, then we put it on the board, it passed. We never went back and voted on the main amendment, though.
That's what he's saying.
Okay, so we never voted on the main amendment for the, what is the seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars? Okay, I just want to make, because it's, obviously it's been very confusing, but that, that vote has never been voted on yet.
Right.
And so I just, okay, so that's where we're voting right now.
It's on the board, it's only what put it on the board.
And we can't have a vote, because that would be the third amendment.
All right, go ahead.
There's not three active, there's not two active, it's always...
Just the seven ninety-seven, that's what we just...
The attorney just spent ten minutes here explaining what you're voting on. Okay. If you want to vote, you can, if you don't, it's a sixteen votes, that's a super majority to approve it as amended. Yeah, we're back to the budget now. We're back to the budget.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I will make my motion again to go back, and the two ninety-seven, two oh two, to put that towards the volunteer fire department.
What's your two ninety's, the spose?
Two ninety-seven.
The prevailing side, we got to pull that back to dispose of that.
Yeah, we have. And we don't need to make enemies here tonight, folks. We don't need to make enemies of the fire department, and we're about to do that.
No, Mr. Chairman, it's not, this isn't, and, and if you have that, that lens where it's like, it's either you, this or that, then that is on you, you know, that is totally on you. So that is not the intent of this motion. Again, I will restate that, and I'll even get closer to the microphone, so it's easier to hear. There are needs for everybody. We have a pot of money that we know of. And so give a little here and a little there. That's the intent of that. Now, there was an amendment made, then it was like, no, you can't, you gotta make a motion. A motion was made, all those were seconded, and now it's like, nah, it's just too late. That's garbage. So, I mean, i- i- if you guys don't want to vote on it, that's fine, that's fine. But, uh, you know, it just, some folks can make amendments, and I guess others can't. Some folks can serve on committees, others can't. So we'll just continue on. So thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Rogers?
Phew, I forgot what I have, oh. I don't want to be made silly, and I don't want to be made a clown. Uh, respectfully, I'm going to come making this amendment. So the ag committee, we've recently learned, uh, that a position is going to be eliminated from their, uh, group of people over at our four H extension office. Part of that is due, well, it's all in, in due to the big beautiful bill that was passed. This person's going to be losing her position as of September the thirtieth. This person goes above and beyond all aspects of her grant-funded job and position. Having said as the ag committee chairman for the last year and a half, uh, there's never been a month that she hasn't went above and beyond her benchmarks, if you will, for the, for the county. This position is one that goes and teaches our senior citizens how to eat healthy, teaches our kids how to eat healthy after-school programs, very much involved in the community. I would encourage you to look at this position, that is a position that the strings restraining her uh, from doing her full potential job is tied to a grant are thankfully now being removed. However, the price of that is going to come to us as a county of about a hundred thousand dollars. That's fully benefits, salary, and everything that's considered. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I make that my motion, that we provide a salary for a hundred thousand dollars, including benefits, to the, the position at the four H extension office, um, so we can have it going forward and not lose an incredible service to our county.
All right, there is a motion and a second, and really that's a very understandable and clear, and shouldn't be a lot of discussion. You either want to add this position back into the budget, or you don't want to add it back into the budget. Commissioner Mansfield?
I move to defer this, um, till next month and send it back to budget.
All right, motion and a second to defer. So, uh, we will see what the attitude of the people are here, if you want to move forward on it or not. So it will not be deferred, we'll take a vote on the issue, it'll go, it'll be up or down, okay? Go ahead.
Each commissioner record your vote.
All right, that receives fifteen votes to include that in the budget. All right? I think we're ready to vote on the budget, believe it or not.
Not, by the way, I, uh, I will make it still, no. Um, first off, uh, Mr. Rogers brought that to me, and I want to be, this is not a silly request. This was a thing that came out of, and I realize I voted against it, um, but I, I would have absolutely taken it up next month. Uh, I just want to make a comment that, that this was not a silly request. This came out of nowhere, this came out of left field for, uh, the ag extension folks, and this is something we had to react to, so, and I appreciate, uh, the ag folks for bringing this one up. Uh, so we'll, we'll find a way to make it right. I would have liked to have a month, but that's okay.
All right.
Um, so this other one is a potential clerical error, and I think there's some back and forth on it, but it's not a lot of, of, uh, money. There was a position that, uh, had originally been listed last year, under the sheriff's department, last year it was sixty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. The request for, was for seventy-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five, and it went back and forth a couple times. I think there is some question about whether or not, uh, the, we had approved in committee the seventy-two thousand versus the sixty-eight. The sixty-eight made it into, um, the budget, and so we couldn't change it. So I, I would just want to appropriate four thousand two hundred and, uh, okay, motion.
Motion and a second. All right, uh, I think because this is budgetary, we ought to put it on the board for a vote.
Each commissioner record your vote.
Each commissioner record your vote, please. This is more of a clerical thing than anything.
All right, we all agree.
All right, that passes with twenty-three votes. Uh, someone's fallen asleep somewhere, who is it? Okay. All right, um, we are ready to put that on the board for, uh, the budget on the board.
In the queue.
Pardon? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, based on the information we've got regarding the school budget, and the fact that the same night we appropriated roughly six million dollars additional to the MOE, and that was the same night they gave back seventeen million into the reserve fund, I would like to make a motion to pull back that increase to the MOE, put that in a separate fund in the county, and possibly use it for the ADA, uh, playgrounds.
All right. Okay, uh, our finance director, would you like to, uh, speak to that? Mr. Law?
I don't, I don't think they can, I think they'll have to vote it up or down. Because if you pull that out, their budget's not going to balance. So I think it'll have to be an up or down vote, really.
Up or down for the entire budget?
For the whole school budget.
The whole school budget. I don't think...
I guess I can't do this.
All right. We're ready now to vote on the, I think, on the budget, if the clerk will post. Commissioner Harris?
I'd just like to disclose, my wife works for Sumner EMS, and I will be voting on the budget.
Thank you. Any other disclosures before we vote on this?
I'm in queue.
Call a question.
Second.
All right. We do need to finish the disclosure, so if anyone here has anything they need to disclose. Okay.
I'll be above them.
Okay.
Each commissioner record your vote.
Receiving fifteen votes, we have a budget.
You know, that was, that was, I was calling the question.
Called the question, which failed.
And it, and it failed.
Good point. Oh, okay, yes, I'm sorry, calling the question. All right. I'm overly optimistic, all right? All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Get the budget.
Just real quick.
Okay.
I mean, I hate that we couldn't sever the budgets, I tried to. I've, I had a lot that I wanted to say about the school budgets, um, presented already by Commissioner, as well as public comments, but I, I just want to stay on the record, I, I can't vote on this entire budget because of the lack of separation, but also I feel that the school budget was forged in false information that was given us last year, based on the data we have, and I just don't think, think that's reasonable. Uh, and I just can't vote for this, so I hate that.
Thank you. Okay.
To make a quick amendment to the budget, to add an additional $400,000 for volunteer fire departments, out of the reserve balance.
Pardon? It didn't pass.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, the question did not pass. So the amendment is, my amendment is, if, if I'm fortunate enough to get a second, to add an additional $400,000 out of our reserve balance at the county, one time. For volunteer fire departments.
400,000?
400,000. Don't get silly, don't get stupid. One time.
Commissioner Lambert. All right, question's been called, we'll call the question on this issue. All right, put that on board. This is called for the question.
Okay, I'm in queue.
All right, the question fails, and I would like, I would like for the Pro Tem to come forward, because I'd like to speak to that. Sitting out here so I can talk, okay? But I can't be for this motion, and, and I appreciate my friend, Commissioner Wright, and his feelings and so forth, but we are, I think we're digging a deep hole that we're not going to be able to get out of if we're not careful. And I understand what Commissioner Harrison is saying, and our, and our other good rural people, and we need to find a way of helping. I'm not sure that continuing to give more and more and more without finding solutions, I thought actually the one that Commissioner Mansfield brought to the Commission, to tell you the truth, some time ago was somewhat a good one as far as feeding money into, through a subscription service for, to, to support the volunteer fire department. And I guess I'm saying this based on the fact that those, those people, and I'm entirely within the city limits, my district is entirely 100% within the city limits, and I pay my taxes to support a pretty elite fire department and police department and so forth. It would be the same as me paying a subscription if I was in the county for a fire department. And I'm just saying, Commissioner Wright, we're friends, and I disagree with you on that, and Commissioner Harrison, I, I just, that's just my feelings, I, I just feel like it's somewhat unfair to those of us that are within city limits. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Becker.
So, I guess a question either to the Budget Chair or to our Finance Director, if, if we were to take $400,000 out of our reserves, what, what, what is the balance?
It depends on, I, I would, and I'm happy to defer this to Mr. Law, but I think it depends on, we need to know where it comes from. Is this a one-time ask? Is it a capital, is it a request for capital specifically? There, we, in order to answer that, we'd need to know more about what the, what the parameters of the ask are. Is that a fair response?
All right, I think that was all in the queue. Did you have another?
I would, I would like to make a motion to defer this to budget.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Let's put that on the board and just see what our will is, if we want to go forward or whatever.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Receives 23 votes to defer this, okay? Now we're voting on the budget itself.
Go quick.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
15 to 8, and we do, we do this time have a budget. All right, I'm going to once again call for a 10-minute break. I know it's late, but we need to take a 10-minute break, and I would like the Committee, the newly-elected Committee on Committees to meet up here. Anybody that wants to observe can.
Did you all get the chairperson and vice chair?
Ms. Chairman, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, I have a clerical note on 2507-11, speaking with the Finance Director. This is something we pretty much have to do, I think. I would argue it's been, it was done implicitly in our previous very long discussions. But, school-related nonprofit debt payoffs, just so we are checking every box here, I move to strike that.
Motion and a second, and without discussion.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So now, we'll be on the main, 2507-11, make appropriations to nonprofitable charitable organizations as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
What, what, okay. I don't want me made a clown, I'm just, this is a serious question. So, is this where the rural fire departments are considered in this, or is that in the actual budget?
This is...
And there's a reason why I'm asking that, because...
It's in, this is in the budget, because these are not, that was not, they're charitable. Yeah, this is charitable nonprofit, this is different.
Okay.
It's, this is, this is, no, no, what he's asking is, is this...
Red cross and things like that.
Gotcha. I'll just, I'll get with Finance Director later, thank you, nothing further.
Thank you.
On the resolution that we're voting on, the fire departments are listed, so... Huh? Well, I'm talking, on this specific resolution that we're, 2507-11, the fire departments are included, so just, so we're on the same page.
Right, but I'm, what I'm talking about here, sorry, I got a little bit confused. I was talking about the $500,000 for the...
No, I know what you were talking about, but I'm answering his question, Commissioner Rogers' question.
All right. The only thing I was trying to get at, and it's not earth-shattering, but it is. The, I would request that the volunteer fire departments have their individual line items. The reason why that is, is so they won't have to come back through Health and Emergency Services again as for appropriations. I'm concerned, and I've heard concerns from the other chiefs, if they don't have that line item as dedicated to their funding already, some of these departments could start falling short of budgets, if they have to wait till the September, October cycle for them to come back through Health and Emergency Services, then to budget, and then to finally have the money allocated. That's the only thing I would ask, if it's possible, Chairman Shoff, and I know I'm probably out of order by going to him, but if we could have those 13 divisions separately listed in the budget, so they could have access to their money.
So, we went, can I respond? We went through this in some detail, and there was a lot of, the discussion all came about how to divvy it up. Do we divvy it up evenly among them, like, how would you propose to do it? Because, at the end of the day, we are under the gun, right? Like, we have to get, we have to get a budget complete, so if you want to make, there's pros and cons to this. If you want to divvy it up per, you could take the, I think, I'd have to look at it, I think there's $200,000 at the bottom, and you would, you know, do you divvy it up equally among the individual...
Thirteen stations.
Thirteen stations, is that what you want to do, just straight up divide it? Sometimes we've done that, other times we have not. It's, sometimes we have, other times we have not.
Then at this time, I would defer if... All right, then I will draw my comments, thank you. If there's anything else, they can come through Health and Emergency Services.
Okay, before anybody changes their main, go ahead. Ms. Chairman.
So, 2507-11, make appropriation to nonprofitable charitable organization as amended.
Set motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like say.
Payroll disbursement has been struck. 2507-13, approved multi-year lease for real property between Sumner County BOE and Moonlight Properties LLC, I so move.
All right, motion and a second. Commissioner Brown?
Chairman, I make a motion that this resolution be deferred due to the fact that a group of six to eight county commissioners asked the Board of Education member Stephen King for a group tour of the Smith Travel Research Building two weeks ago after Director Langford's presentation at the GOP meeting. Director Langford told Stephen King that he would not be able to provide this tour until this week. This group of county commissioners is ill-informed of this building and resolution due to this delay.
All right, motion to defer. Anybody in the queue wanting to speak to that? To defer, all right, let's see what the will of the body is.
May speak to that defer.
Okay.
There, there, there have already been several opportunities to visit that building, and those, all commissioners have been invited to those, and so, I believe that point that was made was moot on that regard, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll just see what the will of the body is. You place it on the board. Deferral, this is a deferral. Okay, Commissioner Rogers?
Call a question.
Say.
All right, question's been called. Would you post that on the board, please?
Each commissioner record your vote.
Looks as if we want to continue to talk about it. Commissioner Lambres?
Call a question.
Call the question, okay. Please post that on the board. Well, we did pick up, did we pick up one vote? No, okay, all right. Commissioner Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've said every time I have addressed this issue, that I am 100% in favor of the School of Innovation. I believe it is at least 30 years overdue and coming, and I commend Mr. Langford for his foresight and forward thinking regarding it. I believe it could be the genesis of a revolution in education in the county, the state, and possibly the country. With the advent of artificial intelligence, many desk jobs could very well disappear, and our young men and women will be required to do the work that computers and robots cannot do. The School of Innovation is one answer to this dilemma. I drove around the Smith property this weekend, we have seen pictures, PowerPoints, and have been told about great dreams and visions for this school. Some have toured the inside of the building, I have not. It sounds very exciting and promising. It is indeed a beautiful facility, and the dollar amount for the rent at face value is more than fair, if not a bargain. That being said, we on the commission have a different job to do. Cheerleading is great, but our responsibility ultimately is to the county taxpayer. Our form of government relies on the push and pull of checks and balances. We hold the purse strings, and by that very fact, we are fiscally responsible for analyzing the business plan of such an endeavor, and our commission rules and procedures confirm that in Item 3 Procedures, D. Resolutions, speaks specifically to our job as far as doing our due diligence on these kinds of things. There's no question about that. To date, the only documentation we have received is a lease. That does not suffice for us to make an intelligent determination on the financial ramifications this new school will bring to our county. As you all know, I've been assured twice in person by Mr. Langford that a proper written business plan would be forthcoming prior to vote. It has not. We all know the potential snowball this can become. It starts with a $4.2 million 10-year lease. Once that is secured, we can never go back, regardless of the circumstances. Whether the improvement costs are excessive, or the building is totally inappropriate for the functioning of a school, we will be committed and will continue forward, if for no other reason than to save face. This is a 21.7 acre piece of property with beautiful and expensive-to-maintain landscaping. It has over 150,000 square feet of asphalt parking, that's about three and a half acres, which at today's rate will cost about $100,000 to do a slurry coat over the worn-out asphalt. It's close to needing that done now. It will also have to be restriped for parking stalls after the slurry coat is put down. From Sumner GIS, Building A is a 22,820 square foot building and was built in 2002. Building B is 26,618 square feet, was built in 2016. Building C is a 6,380 square foot storage garage. It doesn't say when it was built. Do we need all three buildings? We don't know, because we don't have a plan. Is this pair of office buildings conducive to transforming to a school? Again, we don't know, because we don't have a plan. What will it cost to convert these buildings to a school? What will it cost to equip the school with the necessary furniture, fixtures, and training equipment to become the School of Innovation? How many classrooms do we need? How many teachers will be required? Do we need more buses? What kind of security do we need? There are hundreds of questions that need to be answered prior to committing to a $4.2 million lease. Why rush into this? Those buildings have been vacant for a while. I don't want to lose out on a great opportunity, but if it's the beginning of a money pit, I'd rather know now. Finally, at the end of the 10 years, which is fairly short in school life cycles, and the lease is up, what happens next? That property is one of the most commercially advantageous intersections in the county. When something happens with the goat farm and/or the Comer property, it's probably going to be a fairly major thing. A practice skating rink for the Predators may give way to a major mall, event center, or concert venue, we don't know. We'll have invested tens to hundreds of millions of dollars at that point. A major hotel could come in, buy the property, and will have lost everything we've invested. The point I'm making is, this isn't a bad plan. It's simply not a plan at all. No one in this chamber would start to build a house for themselves without building plans, knowledge of what that house will cost, whether or not you have the money required to build it, or how long you'll be able to stay in that house. Why are we doing this? I want this school to succeed as much as all of you do, but that's not what our job is right now. We are to do the due diligence of any governing or ownership body. We are to ask the hard questions and properly vet a proposal that comes from the school board. This is why we were elected. We are the advocates for all taxpayers of Sumner County, not just those who have involvement in the school system. We are the checks and balances for this, that our government system requires. If 100% of our constituency was in favor of this lease and the ultimate school to follow, we still need to do this work. The school and everything involved with this project would be better for it when we do. And besides, to do anything less than I have presented is a violation of our oaths to the people who elected us, and an abandonment of the rules and procedures that we all agreed to at the early days of this commission term. I will go one step further and suggest that if you're still willing to vote yes on this lease, you should really ask who, as a commissioner, you are really representing. If it's not the people who elected you, you might want to reconsider your inclusion in this body. And with this all in mind, I will make an amendment to the motion that this lease be referred back to the General Operations, Education, and Budget Committees, and await a true business plan or pro forma from the Sumner County School Board for the Innovation School that reflects the requirements of the commission rules and procedures.
All right, a motion and a second to refer this back. Don't see any other names that have popped in to this particular motion. If so, let me know.
16 votes, no debate.
All right, go ahead. What is your motion, Commissioner? To defer?
We just...
Okay.
We already took a vote.
I would, would you clear the board and let's start over? Everyone understand the motion was defer.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, didn't we already take a vote to defer?
We never finished the vote. There was confusion, and I ask her to reset the board. To defer this. 14 votes, not to defer. All right, anyone else want to speak on this? Commissioner Mansfield?
Yeah, I just want to briefly say that the term "public-private partnership" was mentioned in regards to this, and somebody had sent me some talking points, I guess, from the school board rejecting a public-private partnership based on these same grounds. I know when, when we had asked questions last month, a lot of my questions were not answered. But this objection on a previous public-private partnership said that this is basically long on ideas and very short on specifics. It's always just around the bend, we're further ahead of schedule, we've got donors, we're here. The problem is not a shred of that evidence is submitted in the requests before us. And that's all we can look at when we're making a decision that's huge for the future of our kids. Right now, it's a $4.5 million commitment on top of everything else. That's for an investment in a new school. And, you know, we can't in Sumner County gamble the future of our children on PowerPoints and good intentions. We have to see the hard facts and the hard evidence, which we have not been presented. So, again, I agree with the sentiment on this public-private partnership, this long on promises, long on ideas, and short on specifics. They're going to have money from so-and-so, money from so-and-so, but we don't have any commitments. So, we really don't have money from so-and-so. It's just a four-and-a-half million dollar commitment of taxpayer funds to, you know, for a new school. And so, I'm not going to be voting in support of this, but I guess I agree with the sentiments from that spoke of the school board on a previous private-public partnership. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown?
I'll be voting no on the Smith Travel Research Building for the following reasons. Believe the Sumner County school system should be reconfigured to the teaching model first implemented in Davidson County with the academy system. Williamson County, Hamilton County, and Wilson County, as well as other various state and out-of-state school systems, came and toured this concept that has been in place for 18 years in Davidson County. Williamson County and Hamilton Counties implemented the same academy system that we have in Davidson County. What am I talking about? Having at least four separate schools or academies within the confines of each high school that is corporate-sponsored to a particular discipline to make the students market-ready or college-ready. These academies range from a multitude of job, profession backgrounds. At my high school, where I retired, we had IT, hospitality-related services, health and human services, marketing and business, international, baccalaureate, and so on. At my wife's high school, they had some of the same fields, and additionally, had entrepreneurship and innovation, health and power, and auto mechanics. My wife ran a student-run coffee shop within the school where the students had to apply for the jobs and run the thing themselves. My wife was just there to make sure everything went right. The students were invited into the corporation that sponsored them so that they could visualize, question, and get hands-on experience. Students were offered internships at these corporations also. At the conclusion of their high school education, many students could enter directly into the field of employment that they had been working in. If there is a particular discipline offered at another high school, not available to the student, that student would be allowed to transfer to that particular high school with that discipline. Transportation would be up to the family of the student. Why is Sumner County lagging behind on this concept? Recognized by the White House as a national high school transformation model, the academies of Nashville provide students with one of the best college and career programs in the nation. Students have a choice of 39 different academies within the largest 12 neighborhood high schools, offering a practical, hands-on approach to learning in fields that interest them, ranging from engineering to healthcare. The academies empower students through career exposure, so they can time, can make timely, informed decisions, and discover their true passions while earning college credit and nationally-recognized industry certifications. General education content is talked through the lens of their academy, while more than 350 business and community partners provide authentic experiential learning opportunities at every level. With this concept in mind, the Board of Education footprint is not increased, no budgetary increase to the county, and all students have access to the academies and a hand-up from the school system. This model is my answer to the Smith Travel Research Building, and to not take on more debt for a stagnated school population. I'll be voting no on this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to inform the body that this has no bearing on my employment, but I will be voting my conscience, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no one else in the queue, we'll place that on the board. Pardon? And that passes 14 to 8. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We are closing in here. These are, I have a couple, I guess just one budget amendment that's passed through from the, from the education meeting earlier, and that's approval of a FY 2026 budget amendment. I would actually, I'll make a motion to pass this, but I'd like to, I'd also like to ask the Education Committee Chair just to confirm that this has any impact on plus or minus revenue, excuse me, plus or minus expenditure, or is it revenue neutral?
Go ahead. No, no, there's, there's no impact here. This is, this is what the state, let me pull up, if you don't mind, I wasn't expecting the question.
It's pure pass-through.
Yeah, yeah, here it is, right here. This is from Dr. Langford himself. He said, "In special session in January, Tennessee legislator approved $2,000 bonuses for Tennessee teachers. Bonus revenue was allocated. In the 2026 budget, we have to receive the money from the state before we can then budget and expend it. The amendment would allow us to pay teachers the $2,000 budget upon passage of the school budget tonight," or I guess this morning.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Pose like say.
And, and, and real quick, there's those other three budget information only, and I'm not sure, Mr. Sittler, if we need to...
Those are docketing, we don't need...
I know, but we need to, they're on the agenda.
Let's wait and do that on the education.
Well, okay.
If we need to approve them, I'm fine. These are budget amendments 40, 46, and 122. These were docketing only. I so move.
Okay, all right, motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye, and mercifully, I am complete.
All right, Health and Emergency Services?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it quick, but just to explain what, what we're seeing here before us. Resolution approving the Sheriff's Office Public Safety Software Service Agreement. None of you come to me with questions, but if anyone has a question, what's wrong? I just want to make sure, it's just for them to secure off-duty employment, very common, and it's, it's a pass-through, there's no extra increase on our MOE. Thank you.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Pose like say. Motion and a second to group and approve. Any discussion on that? Mr. Mayor?
On the disposal of surplus items from the mayor's office, we need to remove one refrigerator and an ice machine from that list when it goes to Gov. deals. That was claimed by an office.
Our motion's second. All in favor of amending?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.